If you could just take one moment to silence your cellphones.
I think that's the.
And please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I'm not sure I have one.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seems like these all have some sort of a pledge of allegiance.
Tonight we have one resolution, and it is a resolution in memory of Isaac Coleman. And councilmember Keith Young would like to present the resolution. I know we have a couple of folks here, Jeanne Bell, former mayor Terry Bellamy. If there's anyone else you all have with you, I would like to come forward.
I don't know if Kennedy is here as well.
Okay. Please, please come forward.
Come on up.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. We wanted to take an opportunity to remember and honor Isaac Coleman, and we wanted to make sure you all have an opportunity to be here. So thank you all for working with us on the scheduling.
This is resolution number 16 dash 147, resolution in memory of Isaac Coleman. Whereas on behalf of the City of Asheville, we extend our sincere condolences over the passing of Isaac Coleman. And whereas Isaac Coleman earned a respect, admiration, and high regard of all with whom he came in contact, and our community has sustained a great loss in his death. And whereas Isaac Coleman, with a quiet voice and peaceful and friendly demeanor, was a lifelong champion of civil rights and social justice. He was instrumental in the establishment of just economics. He served for 11 years on the Board of Clean Water for North Carolina. He was a founding member of Reed to Succeed, and in 2014, he was honored as an Asheville Living Treasurer. And whereas Isaac Coleman served our community in numerous ways, including serving on the African American Heritage Committee of Asheville and Bunkin County, and working for 27 years as a City of Asheville Housing Inspector, and for five years as a manager for the Asheville Housing Authority. He was a mentor and trusted advisor to many individuals and groups, and he served in other capacities to numerous, too numerous to mention. And whereas Isaac's death leaves us with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of a beloved and sincere force for good in our community, who left an undeniable mark on everyone who knew him. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Asheville that the City of Asheville extends our sincere sympathies to his family and friends upon the passing of Isaac Coleman, approved and adopted this 28th day of June 2016, signed by Mayor Esther Manheim. Y'all right. I will give the opportunity, if anybody wants to say anything, say it.
Mayor, City Council members, we'd like to, family, and I would like to thank you for your consideration. We'd also like to urge you, as we move forward in this century, to please not forget what Isaac stood for. Everything is not better. There are still battles to be won and some things to be fought. Freedom definitely is a constant struggle. We would urge you, Isaac was a peacemaker, we would urge you not to become complacent with the status quo. We are all so connected by so many threads. We will ask you to remember to go for change, do something different, and keep that memory alive. Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming tonight to give us an opportunity to remember Isaac with you. All right. We have no other proclamations or resolutions on our agenda. We do have a consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda or a motion?
I just have. In regard to H., which is enacting a 25 mile an hour speed limit on several areas, several sections of road in the city, I really applaud that. We are, we struggle with a large, or too many pedestrian fatalities, and I attribute that a lot to speeding, and would like to see us continue to work toward reducing the speed limit all across the city.
To that end, if the Chair of the Public Safety Committee were interested in exploring it, the idea has been proposed in the past of a citywide speed limit that there would be exceptions to in faster areas, and it's something that may be worth exploration.
And I think it's part of the pedestrian master plan also, and it's one of the goals.
And in that regard, when the State Highway Patrol announced it was going to start strictly enforcing the speed limit about six weeks ago, I guess, they said they were going to absolutely stick to the speed limit. I started doing the speed limit, and my miles per gallon went up noticeably. You know, like a lot of you probably do, I usually go five over on the interstate, you know, that sort of thing. I'm now going the speed limit, and my little gauge on the dashboard has definitely clocked in about four miles per gallon better.
As a member of the Public Safety Committee, this was very interesting to me as well, and I would love to have that analysis about what streets should be 35, what should be 25, which is, you know, are there enough that should be 25 that that should be the default? Or maybe that has already been done in the pedestrian plan, but it's a conversation I'd love to have.
I know it's a pretty intensive analysis when we do, street by street, so I'm not sure what is involved in the whole city, the whole city analysis. Ken is not here, but if he were, he would jump up and he would.
But Jeff's here.
Jeff, all right.
He's popping up.
Well, are there any other questions on the consent agenda?
Move we approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a comment there. I live on a road that's a 25 mile per hour speed limit, and it's regularly ignored. There's more to it than just putting speed limits.
It's forcible. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jeff Moore, I'm the City Traffic Engineer. I'll be happy to answer questions about speed limits. At the risk of answering a question that hasn't been asked, for instance, on Charlotte Street, the difference in 30 miles per hour in 25 is 13 seconds. That's how much longer it would take, assuming there are no traffic signals. 13 seconds difference. So anyway, we do have, speeding is one of the issues we struggle with, and I believe it's part of his education. People don't really realize that they're going too fast in a neighborhood. People want to be able to enjoy the streets that they live on and have a higher quality of life. So I will be glad to work with the Public Safety Committee Commission and study that, the citywide 25 mile per hour as a default. Be more than happy to look into that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I see several heads nodding, so we'll go that route through public safety and brief the committee on current policy and the basis for it, and additional analysis or considerations you could, council might want to make.
Thank you.
All right. Do I, someone seemed like they were about to make a motion.
I did. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We've adopted the consent agenda. We have one presentation, our stormwater annual report. And McCray Coats is going to take it away.
We started at the end, sorry y'all. Good afternoon, council. My name's McCray Coats. I'm the Stormwater Services Manager for the City of Asheville. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about our stormwater programs. It's been a very exciting time in our division with stormwater to see that program grow over the last few years. So want to highlight tonight some of the projects that we've been working on this past year. Probably the largest project that we've been working on is the Craven Street Improvement Project. This project is a multi-faceted project, including bike lanes, roadway improvements, greenways, sidewalks. What we have had the opportunity to do was to go out and implement a lot of stormwater control measures. We were able to install some of the first curb use parking along the roadway there. Were able to go out and take a stream that was in terrible condition and improve that stream through a stream restoration program. Also able to put several stormwater BMPs along the roadway, partnering with New Belgium through some property easements there, along, and joining forces with New Belgium to develop these programs. So very excited about that project as we move forward and near completion. Some of the other programs that we do is our in-house construction. We do projects from as small as 10, 15, 20 feet in length to over 500 feet of new installation of pipes. And notice on the bottom there, it talks about Sleepy Hollow. That's a project, and we're running into this a lot lately, is we see pipes that were put in the ground back in the 1970s that were made out of corrugated metal, and metal rusts, and we're having to deal with that quite often. This was a similar situation. We had to put in approximately 500 feet of pipe, replace that pipe, the bottom had rusted out. So a key element of what we do is these vacuum trucks and providing that service. Were able to go out and clean drains, clean stormwater pipes that normally in the past we would have to dig out of place. Through the vacuum trucks with high-pressure hoses, we're able to get in there, clean those out, and keep those functioning. So good program. Were able to clean about 5,900 drains last year, so very impressive. The street sweeping program is part of our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. That is a federal mandate that we're required to do. The City of Asheville is a Phase Two program with that. But we're able to get out and hit our city streets about three times annually to form that street sweeping operation. Critical, but again, you know, we sweep roads that have curb and gutter. Last year, we were able to remove approximately 1,100 tons of material, and that's about 110 tonne loads, so to put that in perspective, so tremendous amount of material. The ditching crew is our newest crew that we were able to put on, and as we grow in stormwater, the stormwater program, we're able to put on a new crew this year to go out and do this ditching operation. This year, we've been able to ditch about 8.4 miles of roadway and clipping the shoulders on those, so very excited about that also. As we start looking ahead with our program, we're looking at the stormwater assessment. As y'all know, we went out to a consultant, to the consultant team of Brown and Caldwell, to develop a capital improvement project. So got Carl McDonald here with me today to talk with you about our capital improvement project, and I'll ask Carl to come up now and talk to us.
Thank you, McCray. Thanks, council. I'll start off by giving an overview of the stormwater assessment process. We began by working with the city to identify their objectives and known stormwater issues. We investigated those known priority areas and developed priority conceptual projects to address those. Concurrently, we conducted a criticality analysis. What that is, is a GIS-based analysis of the city-owned infrastructure to determine the likelihood of failure of infrastructure and the criticality or the consequence of that failure. If infrastructure was to fail, what would be the consequence? Both of those parallel paths led us to developing conceptual project solutions. We developed 25 concept projects that we evaluated for benefits and costs, and that evaluation led us to a prioritized five and 10-year CIP plan. Dig into a little more detail on the field assessments. We evaluated 1,300 structures, and out of those, 411 were making recommendations for corrective maintenance. And that corrective maintenance spans from, anywhere from structural replacement, 15 structures we identified for complete replacement, all the way through to 256 structures of those 411 would be recommended for minor improvements, cleaning, vacuuming, that sort of thing. That represents, the 1,300 structures represents about 14% of the city's total asset inventory, and the 411 structures represents about 40% of the 1,300 that we evaluated. Next up was project concept development, and that process included, again, issue identification, determining what the drainage issue was that we were trying to solve, a field assessment of that issue, concept development, an example of which you see here. This is a proposed concept project along Sulphur Springs Road. We're adding infrastructure that doesn't currently exist to assist with drainage along Sulphur Springs, as well as each project that we evaluated, we proposed or looked at the opportunity for green infrastructure implementation, such as buyer retention, storage ponds, that sort of thing. The final step was to provide a budgetary cost estimate for each project, and this allowed us to compare the benefits of the project from a stormwater perspective with the cost to flesh out our top value projects for dollars spent. Give you a quick overview of the evaluation process. This is basically a scoring exercise. So each project that we developed, we evaluated on five criteria. These were developed in conjunction with the city. These were also presented at our public meeting that we held on January 28th, so the public did have some, an opportunity to provide input on that. And that process included evaluating criteria such as maintaining and improving the stormwater system, protecting and improving water quality. That is where we evaluated the opportunity to combine with green infrastructure, meet customer service expectations, maintain safety for the community, and how the project might improve the city's cost efficiency. If the city's spending a lot of money on maintenance costs, repetitive site visits to projects that are problems, that sort of thing. So finally, through the project development and valuation process, that led to our recommended 10-year CIP. And that prioritization for the 10-year CIP, once we had evaluated the projects, the prioritization process for that is, again, the evaluation, which projects scored the top based on a benefit, you know, the value of the project by itself. The second prioritization criteria would be project readiness. So a project could either be from one end of the spectrum, just a concept as of now, to a project that's fully ready to be implemented and proposed for an RFQ or RFP release. Those projects get moved to the top of the CIP. And then the third criteria would be balancing annual budgets year over year. For this assessment, we targeted an annual budget of between $1 million and $1.4 million per year for projects. This graphic illustrates the spatial location of the 10-year CIP projects that we're proposing, and I won't go into detail on all of these, but as you can see, there's pretty, there's good coverage of the entire city of Asheville. So the 10-year CIP doesn't focus on any one area of Asheville. It really is a complete plan that'll provide stormwater improvements across the city. And then the completion of the assessment, to date, we delivered everything that I've shown you, and then we have three final tasks to deliver to the city. One is a prioritized watershed assessment list. So as the city continues to evaluate the needed projects, they'll do that on a watershed by watershed basis. And so we'll take what we've learned from this assessment and provide a prioritization list for those watershed evaluations. And as those evaluations produce more projects, the city will need to evaluate them, hopefully in the same manner that we've done for this project. So not only is this project just a report that's going to be delivered to the city, it's really a process that will allow them to continue the planning across the horizon as more projects are developed. And so in conjunction of that, we're providing a planning decision tool, and that tool will allow the city to replicate this process that we've done in an efficient manner and allow them to move forward more quickly and more efficiently in planning the CIP every year. And then finally, again, what we've delivered to date are individual data fact sheets, technical memorandum, all those things will be summarized in a final assessment report that will have a complete summary of our recommendations, not only for projects, but for processes as well. And with that, I will close it, and we can open it up for questions.
I'm curious, with your experience with stormwater, climate science suggests that we're getting heavier inundations, and we will as air warms, and personal experience seems to suggest that's happening. Has that changed the recommendations that you make going forward in terms of maybe pipe size or the way we handle water?
It does, and it's an interesting topic, and it's a complex one, but it's one that is becoming more the norm as you, you know, as you do more evaluations. You know, in the past, we've really looked at two scenarios, current and future, and tried to weigh the differences between those scenarios, but particularly with climate change, and I think we've seen, you know, just over the past 10 years in Asheville, an increase in even small, small duration storms are much higher intensity. So future planning has become more of the norm as opposed to evaluating on a current runoff basis, yeah. Thank you.
One terminology question, in the way, when you were weighting the various aspects, one, it mentioned a 303D stream.
Yes.
What does that refer to?
That's a, that's an impact, that's a state designation for an impacted stream. So the EPA and the state, they have lists for 303D impacted streams. To my knowledge, I know the Swanonaw, I'm pretty certain the Swanonaw River is one, and the French Broad River is one. There aren't nearly as many in Asheville as there are in other municipalities, but that's what the terminology.
Okay. That's helpful. And when I saw that, you know, we, last year, didn't put another crew on, and there's been obviously a ton of work done, and that eight miles of ditching that has been done, I couldn't recall if that was, if we're on target, if we've exceeded target, if we're still behind, where are we with that?
That is pretty much on target. So, you know, certainly we're a new crew, we're building, we're adding equipment as we, as we were able to there, but we're able to push forward, and, you know, it's a process, and what we're looking at there is clipping those shoulders, pulling those ditches, councilman, and, you know, we are on target.
It's impressive. It's a lot of work that y'all have gotten done. I really appreciate it.
Certainly, a lot more to do, though. I think we've got to keep that in mind.
And that leads me to my last question, which is, you know, you kind of spotted out 10 years, 10-year CIP major projects, but then you list these 411 fixes that are necessary. So in that broader context, what's it going to take for us to hit that?
What we're focusing on with the capital projects is going out to contracts. So that will be contracting those services out while still utilizing our in-house services to tackle the maintenance needs of the 411 or others that come up through those rested pipes we talked about earlier that we find out about almost daily, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One question. McCray, I think you said that you all do the street sweeping three times a year? Is that right?
That's correct.
Is there a reason, is there a reason beyond resources and money that it doesn't happen more often than that?
We operate three street sweepers currently. So what that averages, sometimes we get four, sometimes we get three. So we do try to hit the bike lanes on a monthly basis to go through and sweep those areas to remove that debris. So what we find is we're somewhere between the three and four cycles a year.
Okay. Any other stormwater questions? Thank you. All right. That's all we have tonight under presentations and reports. So I'm going to move into public hearings. The first is a public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 99999 Lookout Drive from RS4 residential single-family medium-density district to RS8 residential single-family high-density district, and I have Vidilla up to bat on this one. You get three out of, you get three out of four tonight, so we'll just settle in here.
Okay. Good afternoon, councilmembers, members of the public. So this is a request to rezone a single piece of property. Can you see it? Oh. This property is located on Lookout Drive. It's just a little ways off from Merriman at the intersection of Highview Drive. I believe this is in Councilman Bartholomew's neighborhood. The parcel is currently zoned RS4. It's on the border. This is the RS4 district, and here's the RS8 district. The applicant is interested in rezoning it to RS8 simply in order to have a different setback. The lot size is consistent with the historic size of the parcels. This is the historic map, so it's consistent with that. The aerial image, you can see that the parcels immediately to the south of his lot are quite a bit smaller, just like his in RS8. In the RS4 district, the minimum parcel size is 10,000 square feet, so currently this lot is noncompliant with that. So really, he just wants to bring it into the standard in order to build a home closer to the street. So he would be able to have a front setback reduced from 25 feet to 15 feet. And that's really the only difference. He wouldn't have more development potential, so he wouldn't be able to build two homes. This, we believe, is compatible with the comprehensive plan, which encourages adaptive reuse, redevelopment, and infill development, and it is consistent with the current vision of your, your current vision, that proposed rezoning should promote thoughtful resident-led planning. So we support this proposed rezoning. That concludes our report.
Do you all have any questions? Are we going to hear from the applicant, or only as needed?
Not needed.
So no formal plan for that. All right. Do all of you have any questions about this? All right. If there aren't any other speakers on this item, I'll open the public hearing. Okay. We'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, please let me know. We'll close the public hearing. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion? Give me a little momentum here, let's try.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the zoning map amendment from residential medium-density single-family RS4 zoning district to residential high-density single-family RS8 zoning district. I find the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, in that, one, the zoning change will encourage the adaptive reuse of vacant property, and, two, promote compatible infill development within the urban fabric of the city by establishing a conforming residential lot.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. That is our first item. Item B, under public hearings, is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for property located at 1401 Tunnel Road for the construction of a six-story, 88-unit veteran housing development. Shannon Tuck is presenting this project. And this, you take it away.
Okay. Before Shannon starts, this is a conditional use permit, so it's a quasi-judicial hearing. I'll go over the procedures briefly, and then we can swear in anyone who expects to give testimony. In a quasi-judicial decision, council must make their decision based on the evidence presented and the sworn testimony. A conditional use permit, in order to be approved, the applicant has got to present substantial material and competent evidence as to each of the seven standards in the UDO. So before we start, if anybody is planning on speaking, they should come forward to get sworn in. Also, the testimony should be limited to facts and evidence that is relevant to the seven standards and that particular application. So having said that, I'll let Maggie swear everyone in. After the council vote, one last thing, is there will be findings of fact and con- After the council vote, one last thing, is there will be findings of fact and conclusions of law in writing which will be approved at the next council meeting. Oh, the 26th meeting.
So what you need to know right now is that if you think you're going to speak on this item, if you just even think there could be a possibility, come ahead, come up front and get sworn in.
of the public. As the mayor has already mentioned, this is a conditional use permit review for the project located at 1401 Tunnel Road. To summarize, the project is a six-story, 50,150-square-foot multifamily building, supporting 88 apartment units to be constructed in two separate phases. 50 units is the threshold for a level-three project, and all level-three projects require conditional use permit, which must be approved by council, which is why this project is before you. The property is accessed from Tunnel Road, Tunnel Road shown here at the north end of the property. There are currently two access points on the property, one located approximately here and one located approximately here. The easternmost entrance will be closed as part of this project with the western entrance maintained. The property will also have access from its sister parcel directly adjacent to the west, which is the veteran quarters property, and there is cross-access between the two parcels. So an individual would be able to enter from either of these entrances as well. There is also an existing building on the property that will remain, it's currently under in-use, and will remain on-site throughout Phase 1. It will be demolished in order to make room for Phase 2. This is the site plan for the property that shows the two phases, as well as some of the other site improvements. The main site improvement, which will be constructed with Phase 1, is the off-street parking and the connection to the adjacent property. The project includes 34 off-street parking spaces, 22 of which are structured and located underneath the buildings. The remaining 54 spaces, where the balance of what would be required, will be shared from the adjacent veterans' quarters property where there is a surplus of parking currently available. The property is zoned river, however, it is located outside of the river district design review area, so it was not required review. It is, the property is also cited so that the building is located outside of not just the 100-year, but also the 500-year floodplain. So this is the 100-year floodplain line, this is the 500-year, so you can see that the buildings are located outside of even the 500-year, which exceeds our minimum standard, especially since the buildings are essentially elevated by putting the structure parking underneath. Other site amenities include an existing garden area located here to the south, and some other sort of landscaped open space, gathering areas, I think there's a gazebo, and some other benches and kind of nice meditative area. The property is surrounded on the eastern side and the southern side by the Swananoa River, and this area is identified on the Buncombe County Greenways Master Plan, so we do anticipate that there will be a Greenway connection at some point in the future. And the applicant has indicated a willingness to talk to Buncombe County about potential Despite being outside of the design review area for river projects, the River District Design Review Committee reviewed the plan with the project's architect at their recent meeting, where the project was complimented not just for its design, but also for its innovative and pioneering use of cross-laminated timber, which I think the architect will speak to a little bit this evening. This will, this is a building elevation, sort of a color rendering of the long side of the building, kind of showing the two modules. The property, or the project does include some interesting use of these architectural design features, these fins, it kind of helps create some shadowing effect and some interest along the facade as well as the different color panels. You can see the lower level is left kind of open for that structured parking. There is a small bit of enclosed space that includes just sort of your lobby amenity areas, the mailboxes, the access to the elevators, things of that nature. Show you sort of a more technical drawing of the elevation. And here you can see maybe a little bit more clearly the openness of that first level, the access into the lobby area. Floors two through five are the primary residential floors that include the efficiency apartments. All of the efficiency apartments are identical in size and configuration. And then finally, the sixth floor includes the meeting room and common space for the residents, as well as a handful of two-bedroom units. The applicant has submitted information describing how they feel that the project meets the conditional use findings. Staff has also reviewed this information and generally concurs with their conclusions. The project was also reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their June 1 meeting, where it was approved unanimously. And that concludes my introduction of the project. Be happy to answer any questions or have the architect approach the podium.
Shannon, are all those things that you put up, they are part of the application?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Crawford Murphy, I'm a partner in the firm of MDS-10 Architects for this project. We're also a partner in the CLT, the cross-laminated timber portion of this particular project. Scott Rogers was to be here a few minutes ago, and I think he's in a board meeting and will not be able to speak today, but I will speak briefly about his concerns. This project has some unique features in that it, the, first of all, it's veteran housing, and as you realize, and Scott realizes, that if he had the funding for four times that many projects, he could fill them tomorrow. So the need is quite critical, and we have really, been real appreciative of the staff's cooperation in developing this on a tricky site, to keep it out of floodplain, to phase it into one and two parts, to be able to permit it, first of all, as a whole project, and then build half of it within a limit of time in the future to build a second phase, and so forth. So, and plus, it's a unique technology of wood. The second point, just to give you some details, is that cross-laminated timber is the most sustainable and advanced wood technology in the world today. It's extensive in Europe, extensive in Canada, it's extensive in the West Coast, it's extensive in Australia, it's extensive in New Zealand, it's extensive in Singapore, Japan. It's not so extensive in the United States yet. So we've been an advocate of this for about four or five years, and now these are example projects and historical projects in the United States in this technology. This particular building will serve as the tallest and the largest use of CLT in the United States to date. So it will go global in its publication and so forth, and be a real credit to Asheville, to ABCCM for its forward thinking, and also, again, appreciation to your staff in working between two codes actually, to, it has been categorized in the 2015 code, we are adapting parts of the 2012 code with North Carolina amendments, and it's worked out quite well for all the fireproofing and so forth that goes into the project. We're very, very pleased. And the other thing unique about this is, this project has 88 units, and every unit, in every space, in every function, is handicapped accessible without exception. There are no units that are not handicapped accessible, both at kitchen and at bath and in sleeping and so forth and so on, in the public area. So it'd be unique. It's also totally non-toxic and has a, on the environmental side, has a sequestration factor of CO2 of over 500 tons in that building, quite unique. I brought just a piece of it to show you. This is a piece of a panel, typical, it's, this was cut from a piece that was 50 feet long, 10 feet tall, and this thick. The project will be, have a very low impact on the community in that it comes in sequence and is elevated, there'd be only about six or eight workers who will establish this building in about, in less than two months, ready for finishes. So it'd be a unique experience, and I'd be glad to answer any details.
I do have a question for you about, I've been, many years ago, I started hearing about this product, CLT, and wasn't aware of whether anything, so it's good to have some perspective about whether or not anything like this has happened in North Carolina. So our council's been able to learn, you know, enough to be dangerous about the building code. And what we've learned is that once you go over four stories, you're in, you're into a more expensive, more involved project because it can't be, I guess, a stick-built.
Yeah, stick-built.
So this is a six-story project using, so is CLT a substitute for, I mean, how is it, how are you able to integrate it into this?
The 2015 code, every so often, they update it about every three years.
The building code, you're talking about the building?
Building code, IBC code, yes. And so it was, in the 2015 code, CLT was categorized and brought from type, and given type 4. And in type 4, we can go six stories on pedestal. Ahead of that, on our own behalf, because we wanted to erect other projects, which we did in Gastonia, and got a national award and so forth for a CLT project, the first commercial project in the United States, we actually went to the Department of Insurance through Bob Speed, and they wrote the first code for CLT acceptable in the United States under type 5. And so we were only able to go five stories in that particular case. But that was a unique document that served several states, by the way, from the North Carolina Department of Insurance. So in the new code, so the building permitting department here is working with us as a, as a building, a five-story building, I mean, a six-story building, and we've separated the pedestal from five stories above, which is allowed through the code, and we've met the conditions of that and so forth and so on. So we've woven a very legal and very creative process through the codes in both the 2012 North Carolina amendments and the 2015 code to make this work here in the United States. We're also doing the same thing in Tennessee, we're starting another project in Florida, and we're talking to two or three other projects here in town that would be also six stories. Actually, if we push the code a little bit and we research this through Asheville, we can probably go 11 stories, but it takes, that's another chapter and it takes a little more.
And what is the advantage of using the product? What is the excitement about it?
I'll give you an example of, this is economics, first of all. It's a safety factor, dealing with the fact that this building will be tornado and earthquake resistant. And so this, the technology allows that to be so adaptable to that. A seven-story building was given an earthquake test in Japan, it was manufactured in Italy, it was shipped over there, it was given this particular test, it passed with no, it was given a 7.2 Richter, it did not collapse, there was no damage at all. So they did it four more times while they had it there, disassembled it, put it back in the containers, sent it back to Italy and put it up for its original use, which was dormitory infill. So it's extremely flexible. The other thing is life safety of people working. Nine-story building in Downstory, 11-story building in downtown Melbourne was put up by two carpenters, superintendent, a crane operator, using one tool, no cutting, no laced, no impact to the site. And it was built on a site that could not be built conventionally because steel and concrete was too heavy, and this was one-third the weight. This was by Lynn Lees, one of the leading developers in the world today. And they put it up and then committed 40% of all of their business to cross-laminated timber and are spending $1 billion right now to build a plant set up there in Australia. So you've got that feature, you've got the life safety features, you've got the economy. The thermal transfer through CLT is so slow that when you put insulation on the outside of the building, which you do, which you do, the average temperature in a season really never reaches the inside surface. Another feature, it's all non-toxic, the glue is almost drinkable, so it's almost sophisticated Elmer's glue, it's all cold processed and the manufacturer, so there's very little energy used. And it's transported by truck, usually within a region, that's the way they do in Europe. And other features, it just goes on and on.
Okay, well, thanks for the education on the product. I have one unrelated question to that, and that is, the drawing shows an exterior staircase on the building. It appears to be a closed exterior staircase, and I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, I know when we build parking decks now, although we haven't built one in a while, but when you see staircases built on exterior parts of buildings, they tend to be open for safety reasons, you know, so people can see in and see what's happening on the stairwell. What is the, is that a planned closed staircase or just for emergency purposes, or?
Well, it's two or three things, there's economics involved in this particular case, and I'll tell you a couple of features on this. All the elevator, all the staircases have windows at the intermediate landings all the way up and down. So there is a degree of openness. The other thing about it is it has two elevators for vertical transportation also, and we oriented both of those elevators towards the administration building a half a block away, so that anybody that gets on an elevator, which is the primary vehicle for up and down circulation in that building, can be observed on the elevator. There'll be sort of a poor man's glass elevator, two of them in that building, that'd be fully open to observation of the administration of the building. So we don't, we just don't, that has not been a problem that has been expressed by ABCCM of the clients in this particular building, so we have, we've incorporated an amount of light and opening into the building, but not necessarily just a lot of it. I think it'd be a little bit different when you're dealing with a building like a parking lot or something like that that has a high public situation. I mean, this is, this particular building's going to be scrutinized extremely heavily.
All right, I've logged up all the questions. Anyone else have any?
I would congratulate you, I know you've been wanting to get this kind of a project going here for quite a few years.
Yes, yes.
I've gotten a lot of emails from you about this.
Oh, yes, and we're very close to being the, possibly the first manufacturer of this product in the United States on the East Coast, a high-tech project. Unfortunately, the plant will be in Virginia because that's, they came through with some money to help us with it. So, anyway, that's the story. Do you have any other questions?
I have one question. You submitted, I assume, as you were the applicant, a statement of the seven findings that supported each one of those findings. I'm assuming you want to present that as part of your case tonight?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other future questions, don't hesitate and get in touch with me. Thank you very much, appreciate it, Mayor.
Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for the ABCCM Veterans Housing Project located at 1401 Tunnel Road because it meets the seven conditional use standards as demonstrated by the applicant.
Second.
Wait, you know what, technically, we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, well, we?
But no one was sworn in.
Okay, so that's it, that everybody?
That was it, that was all that was sworn in. Sorry, proceed.
Second.
And congratulations, Crawford. Crawford and I had coffee two and a half years ago when he showed me that block of CLT that he brought for us tonight. You've been doggedly persistent, and thanks, Scott, for continuing to work to make this a reality. It's going to make a big difference in a lot of lives.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And no other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our public hearings agenda is a public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously approved conditional zoning ordinance to, one, rezone portions of the property at 311 and 315 Old Hawk Creek Road from institutional district conditional zoning to RS4 residential, single-family, medium-density district, RS4 CZ residential, single-family, medium-density district conditional zoning and institutional district conditional zoning. And two, to modify the site plan and proposed uses to remove student housing from the project plan. And three, allow conditions to reduce setbacks, provide sidewalks, and allow parking within a property line buffer. And Vidilla is back again.
Good afternoon again. So council members, this is a, this was a conditional zoning that was adopted by council in September of last year, so I'll kind of go over it a little bit for the new folks. This is the site here, we are in Hawk Creek. This is the site here, we are in Hawke Creek, and this is Old Hawke Creek Road and Bethesda Road. So the parcel that says institutional CZ, that's the newly zoned parcel, and it's surrounded by RS4. So it's a church site, there's a church, this is all a cemetery, it's wooded on the western part with a parsonage, and there's a sort of a gravel parking area on one side. So, let me refresh your memory for what was approved previously. This was a project to create a adaptive, flexible reuse of the church, so that it has co-working office spaces and a kitchen space for makers to come in and, and learn how to cook foods. There were 10 tiny homes, so they were gonna house ministerial students there. After thinking and working on it and working out the budget, they realized this wasn't gonna work for them, so they are coming back and looking at a different proposal which would break up the parcel into three segments. The, the center part with the church and the cemetery would continue to be institutional CZ, and they would break off two residential parcels, so they would take the student housing out of the project scope and just focus on their church facility and the related operations. So this is what the revised site plan looks like. I have the two highlighted yellow sections are the proposed residential portions that would be later subdivided and turned into long-term housing. This central part would continue to have a property line buffer on the eastern part, you can see where the trees are, the sidewalk would actually cross the street before it went along this, this side of the property, but the, the grades were too difficult, so they proposed to keep it but to move it to the other side of the street. And that's really it. Let me see here, we have received one letter in opposition to the, from the property owner immediately adjacent to this parcel, who does not want to have the reduced setbacks, stating that the, that the parcel is buildable without modified setbacks. And although this is true, it would limit the location of the home to one spot, restrict its shape, and it would make the inclusion of a garage and/or accessory structures challenging. So this is a visual showing what they are proposing, with some reduced setbacks in the front and, and the, in the rear. And you can see from the shape of the lot being narrow and long, if we keep the 25-foot setbacks, it makes the, the buildable area very small and quite a bit more challenging. So, that's the, that's the only increase in impact in this proposal, otherwise it is significantly reducing the impact because the entire strand of trees here is left intact where, when before they were cutting through all of that. We believe that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which looks at reusing old buildings as a most sustainable form of construction, and consistent with the 2036 vision, in that it promotes thoughtful resident-led planning, and proposes rezoning, the rezoning provides co-working spaces that bring community members together. Staff recommends approval of the, the proposed conditional zoning amendment to remove student housing from the project and rezone this property to RS4, RS4 CZ, and institutional CZ. That concludes my report.
Does anyone have any questions for Vidella before we?
I do. Given the concerns of that adjacent property owner, have you all looked at adjusting the setbacks in any way, particularly that rear setback to something, to something else, to 15 or 20 feet, or maybe moving, reducing the front setback by another five feet? Just, what, what does that do to the, the buildability of the lot?
I might turn it over to the applicant, or the applicant's representative, to talk on that. I mean, clearly, the, the more space that we give, it gives them more freedom for development. On this site, there, there's no sewer, so they would have to put in a septic system, so that also comes into play.
Does the septic system have to be in the, in the setback?
It can be in the setback.
But it doesn't have to be?
No.
Okay. I mean, sorry, I meant, does it have to be in the buildable area?
No.
It can, it can bleed over into something.
Yeah. So, I, if you want more information on that, I would turn it over to Sean Rice, who's the, the representative for the project.
Okay, yeah. Other questions? Okay. The applicant's representative.
Good evening, my name is Sean Rice, I'm with RFD CDC, and we're the consultant for this church and the applicant. Essentially, that, that lot being a corner lot in the, on the, thank you. On the Bethesda, there's plenty of road parsonage, and even on Old Hawke Creek, if that was 15 feet more, that setback that we're asking for would be there by right. So just because of its odd shape, we were trying to give as much option as, as we could to, to have a lot that the church could use or sell, or, or do whatever they want. We'd certainly be willing to compromise with the, with the adjacent homeowner, that's, that's not an issue, but we would like to have a little bit more space in case there was an accessory dwelling to be included in that house, future built house. Any other questions?
I infer from this that they've abandoned their tiny house construction project.
They have abandoned the tiny houses. The, the whole goal of the project was to have a model for, for churches that are struggling to remain in existence and do something creative that added value to the community. The tiny houses were, were doable for this situation, but they're not in a lot of places, the cost was just too high. So we looked at adding on to the existing parsonage, doing a four-bedroom, four-bath addition, and doing congregate living. The issue with that is, in the end, the church would be left with an eight-bedroom, seven-bath house, and what do you do with an eight-bedroom, seven-bath house, right? It's not something you rent, it's, you know, it wouldn't be a desirable bed and breakfast in, in its current condition. So, right now, the, the idea is just to go back to residential zoning and give them some flexibility if they wanted to, you know, turn that into a flag lot and just build another parsonage, and have two houses for folks while they're there. They just don't know what they want to do right now, and this just gave them most freedom for the future.
Are there other questions? I'm, I'm realizing, three of us were not here when we did this the first time, and the other four of us were, experienced this to its fullest.
Brief overview?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not calling for that, I'm just...
Good, I didn't want to give one.
Okay, if there, are there any other, do you all have any other presenters before I open this up for the public hearing? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, did, okay, do you have any other questions? All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? I'm gonna close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the conditional zoning amendment request for Hawke Creek Commons at 311 and 315 Old Hawke Creek Road to amend the zoning of the property from institutional district conditional zone to institutional, I'm sorry, institutional district conditional zone, residential, single-family, medium-density, and residential, single-family, medium-density conditional zone, based on the revised site plan and conditions list, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the development is existing and was deemed appropriate through the 2015 conditional zoning process. Two, by removing student housing and associated tiny homes from the project plan, the proposed plan will be less impactful on the land and on the neighborhood than the earlier proposal.
Does the motion, or I'd second?
Well, before I second, I want to ask if you would accept a friendly amendment to change that rear setback from 10 feet to 15 feet.
The applicant is nodding yes, he agrees to the, yes, okay.
Okay. Then I'll second.
Well, let's not, okay, so let's just say that your motion included that provision.
Right, yes.
Okay, and then you seconded it.
I did.
Maggie, did you get that? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, our final item, and I'm sure not our quickest item, will be a public hearing to consider conditional zoning property located at 60 Mills Gap Road from industrial district to highway business district conditional zoning for the development of a 272-unit multifamily development. And Vidella is up again, for the last time.
Hi again. So, this is a review of an application for conditional zoning from industrial to highway business conditional zone for the construction of 272 multifamily units. To orient everybody to the site, we are in South Asheville, at the corner of Mills Gap Road and Sweeten Creek Road. The property is zoned industrial, to the west of it, we have commercial industrial, both, on both sides of the street, and then some high-density residential here. Maggie, could you turn on the laptop? I wanted to kind of fly through the area a little bit to show you some of the constraints that are hard to talk about without seeing this. So, this is, this is the site here, just here, here's Asheville, and we're in, we're in South Asheville, down here at the bottom. The site is on Mills Gap Road, which is called Mills Gap, as you can see, because there's this gap in the mountains.
Just go to art.
And, all the traffic for the county that comes, or most of the traffic comes in through that gap to go up to Asheville, and there are really, really few roads to go up to the city of Asheville, so they have Sweeten Creek here, Hendersonville Road, whoops, went too far here, I hope nobody's getting dizzy, and the 26 over there. So it's quite a challenging site for whatever happens in regard to traffic, because there's really, there are really few roads east, west, and north-south. So having said that, let's talk about what is being proposed. This multifamily, oh, yep, now we're going back to, yes, please. So, this is the proposed plan, you can see there are two large, larger residential structures that are colored yellow, yellow are the, the buildings. There would be 272 units, each one is about four stories. The total disturbed area of the site is 13 acres, there would be 401 parking spaces, including parking spaces for accessibility and bike parking. There is a stream through the property, they would have to have a buffer along it. The project does meet all of our landscaping requirements, including street trees, building impact and landscaping protection on the, on the parking. The project was reviewed by the technical review committee and in December of 2015. It later went to the Planning and Zoning Commission in November of 2015, and then was continued to further Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on January 6th. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve it, partially based on the project proposing 20% affordable units. In the six months' time between when it went to P&amp;Z and now, the applicant has, has changed that and is going, proposing to only provide 15% affordable units, but for 15 years, before it was 20% for 10 years. And the applicant met with the community on two occasions. The proposed, the proposal requires a change in zoning due to the fact that the maximum residential density in, in an industrial district is low, it's only two units an acre, which would only result in a maximum of 31 units being allowed in this property. So, the current proposal requires at least 18 units an acre, so they're asking for this rezoning to highway business. So is it compatible? The parcel is operated for industrial purposes for many years. It's, it's, it is a viable industrial piece of property because it's located within three miles of Interstate 26, six miles from the airport, it's served by sufficient utility demands for industrial businesses, and is not located in a flood area. Removing the site for residential purposes would permanently remove this land from the limited stock of viable industrial property, and would further incentivize speculative, speculative purchasing of industrial properties by residential developers. This is an advertisement that I got off the internet today, showing the site for sale, and that it would make a good multifamily site as well. "We understand that more housing is needed in Asheville, but we question whether it should be provided at the expense of future job and business growth opportunities, especially consider the many, considering the many vacant parcels of land that permit residential development." We did receive a letter from the Chamber of Commerce, whose nonprofit mission is to protect and improve the business climate and quality of life within a specific region. The letter stated that the property is not best suited for the high standards of national and global clients. That may be the case, but there are smaller, local industrial businesses that are negatively impacted when industrial zone parcels are rezoned for residential uses. And as an aside, we wonder how the chamber is protecting and improving the business climate by promoting the conversion of industrial property for residential development. And it should be noted that the city has recently invested $100,000 in this nonprofit. There's been some talk about how much traffic is there and how, how many units are in the pipeline. This is a, an image showing projects that are in development, completed, or this proposed project right here that we're talking about.
Vidella, we can't see the key very well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see if I can zoom out. As far as I can go. Proposed, the proposed 272 units, completed is this 224 apartments, and in development are the others. Since doing this, I think, I think this one here is, is open and mostly rented. There's been a lot of discussion of residential development in South Asheville in the past few years, which is contributing to the growing traffic concerns, and the traffic impact study explains that there are currently significant periods of congestion, delay, and poor levels of service. The applicant has proposed significant traffic mitigation improvements to ameliorate conditions before the project is completed, so that's good. A few considerations for you, in December 2014, the city took an intentional step to protect industrial property by reducing the residential development potential in commercial industrial zoning districts, and that policy was, was rooted in the belief that industrial properties should be protected for industrial purposes. The city's comprehensive plan highlights that one of the main factors contributing to economic development becoming such a crucial, critical issue is the loss of land suitable for industrial purposes for other uses. And the goal, goal three of council strategic plan seeks to support the creation of new jobs, which in part depends on the availability of appropriately zoned industrial land. So based on these plans and the above report, staff does not find this request to be reasonable or within the public interest, and cannot recommend supporting this, this rezoning request as proposed. This concludes my report.
Does anyone have any, does anyone have any questions for Vidella?
The conclusion was that, let's see, what did I say? Staff does not find this request to be reasonable or within the best public interest, and cannot recommend support of the rezoning as proposed.
And Vidella, just briefly, that's based on the request to change this from industrial, a zoning industrial, and, which council's previously discussed, and what else?
Well, primarily, in the report, we talk about some traffic concerns, the number of units that have been built recently that aren't fully taken into account in, in all the traffic modeling, and, and the loss of industrial property.
So those two, traffic and the industrial zoning factor.
I think that's, that's fair. That's the heart of it.
Does anyone have any questions for Vidella?
Yes, I have a question. What, if any, are the prospects of this property coming used in industrial or any sort of job creation?
Well, a lot of that, of course, depends on what the price of the property is. Well, a lot of that, of course, depends on what the price of the property is, you know. So, I'm not speculating, but, you know, if you're seeking to sell something for residential, you're seeking a different price than if you were pricing it for industrial. The site has been used for industrial purposes for many years, so it makes sense that it would be viable. The current structure may need some work. I can't talk about the details of how, how much improvement it may need, or what kind of business would go there. I think we are just trying to make the case that it may not, it may not be the best site for, you know, a multinational business, but there are plenty of Asheville-based businesses that are looking to grow and expand, and as we lose industrial property in the city, where are they going to go?
Also, Enroe, to where this property is at, in relation to, I think there was mention of other properties in the area that were suitable for residential, where are they in reference to this property?
Well, residential development is allowed in lots of districts, not just in residential districts, so, like, basically...
Well, I mean, the viable, the viable parcels of land that would suit this sort of project.
Well, we didn't, as part of our analysis, we didn't identify any specific parcels to say, here's one, but from our understanding of, and even living and driving around Asheville, there are plenty of properties for sale within highway business districts, regional business districts, similar districts that allow similar housing densities. So, we didn't do any specific analysis to sort of suggest that they should look at different parcels, at specific parcels.
Sorry, sorry, Enroe. Vidella, I just want to answer your previous question to Councilman Young Todd Lachey, Planning and Urban Design Director. I did have a conversation with Sam Powers earlier today, the director of our Community and Economic Development Department, about the previous history of the site and its use for industrial purposes. And my understanding is that, as early as 12 months ago, that the site was being used for storage purposes, for some of the parts, for Conmet, which is a local industrial use. So, again, my understanding is that 12 months ago, that the property was being used to store parts for that industrial company.
What size employer? Just curious.
Conmet, they're based out of Canton, I believe. I'm not sure of the size, off the top of my head, but they supply sort of parts for vehicles and trucks and that sort of thing.
I know we're going to hear from the applicant next, and I don't know how many speakers you all have, but if you want to go ahead and give us the rundown here and get started on that.
Members of the Asheville City Council, my name is Lou Visser, and I'm representing the applicant at this hearing. I'd like to make a few summary remarks, followed by Chris Day of Civil Design Concepts, who will discuss in detail the specifics of the project, and particularly the traffic mitigation efforts in the area adjacent to this site.
Lou, let me put you on pause for just one second. Can everybody here in the chamber, are we good? Okay. Good, all right. Just make sure everyone tries to get close to their mic.
Good. So, Chris Day would make a presentation after I do, followed by Rusty Pulliam, the developer, who would like to make some comments related to the project and the issues before you tonight. We also have on hand with us tonight James Voso of Matern &amp; Craig, our traffic engineer, and Michael Chang of Partners Environmental, our environmental consultant, as well as the current owner of the property, who is here as well. I also understand that there will be a number of individuals from the Asheville affordable housing community, as well as others, who may wish to speak in support of the project during the public comment session. You have before you the staff report, which provides the basics of the proposed project, together with Exhibit B1, which is the list of conditions that the developer has agreed to accept. So, we're talking tonight about 272 multifamily units to be constructed on this 15-acre parcel. In addition to the required landscaping, open space, and other standard requirements, the applicant has agreed to a number of other conditions designed to lessen the impact of the project on the neighborhood, and comply more fully with the city of Asheville's comprehensive plan and other adopted plans and goals. These additional conditions include the preservation of specimen trees, the inclusion of at least 15 percent affordable housing units for a period of time of not less than 15 years from the date of issuance of the project's certificate of occupancy, and a number of traffic enhancements to the intersection at Sweeten Creek Road and Mills Gap Road. And that is together with sidewalk and pedestrian crossing improvements, which will extend the sidewalk adjacent to the project east along Mills Gap Road and across the railroad tracks to connect to the recently-installed Palisades sidewalk to Hendersonville Road. In addition, the developer has agreed not to begin work on the demolition of existing structures, infrastructure, or site work until January of 2017. At that time, that work, together with the proposed intersection improvements, will begin as the first phase of the project. Furthermore, the developer has agreed that the city shall not be required to issue a building permit for any part of the actual housing or vertical construction until at least January of 2018. These efforts will, of course, be coordinated with NC DOT Projects, U-5834, which is the Mills Gap Road project, and U-2801, which is the Sweeten Creek Road project, which are scheduled for construction in '21 and '22, and I confirmed that with David Brown yesterday. This, of course, means that the completion and lease-up of the proposed multifamily housing project cannot take place until very near the time of the construction of the two road projects. Since approval was granted by Planning and Zoning, the applicant has held two well-attended community meetings at the Skyline Fire Department, and met with various members of the community, including Vijay Kapoor, who is here tonight, and as I understand it, will speak on behalf of a number of community residents. As a result of these community meetings, the applicant has agreed, as I indicated, to increase the number of enhancements to the intersection and sidewalk installations, and has agreed to delay commencement of the project as outlined in your Exhibit B1 conditions. As you're aware, this is a request to rezone the property from industrial to highway business conditional zone. We do not believe that this area remains viable for industrial development. Most of the prior industrial uses in this general area have been Budweiser, across the street, Gerber, Ball, Number, they've all gone. This site has been empty and for sale as an industrial property for a number of years now, with few, if any, indications of interest for that type of use. Now, I heard, I heard what Vidella said about it had been used. It was leased for three months with no employees as a storage facility to a company who was building a plant over, I believe, in Haywood County. So, it was not used as an industrial use within the last, whatever you say, 12 months. That's just incorrect. I also have a letter from Ben Teague, the executive director of the Economic Development Coalition, dated November 19, 2015, indicating that he did not believe that this property is well-suited for industrial development. And he goes on to point out that the cost to purchase this property and build another facility is far too expensive to accommodate industrial development. And I think Ben is here tonight and may want to answer some of your questions. We've all heard many times over the last year or so that the city of Asheville is experiencing a housing crisis. The Asheville Citizen Times in April of this year produced an extensive article on Asheville rents, indicating that Asheville's multifamily rent structure is the highest in the state. The average cost of renting a home or apartment in Asheville increased almost 8 percent from March 2015 through March 2016. This is information that was in the article. That was the highest surge of housing costs in the state of North Carolina. The article further concludes, and I know you've heard this before from the Boeing study, that our vacancy rates are approximately 1 percent, unbelievably low. This article by Mike Cronin ends with this statement, and I would like to read it, that even if all policies planned by Asheville public officials to alleviate the housing shortage occur, those strategies would yield just 2,800 new units by 2022. That's one-half of the 5,600 units that the Boeing report authors concluded the city needed more than a year ago. So, I hope you can agree with me that the city of Asheville currently has a housing crisis, not an industrial crisis, and that this project can help to alleviate that crisis. This project will add 272 multifamily units to the city's housing stock, including 41 affordable units, which will remain in an affordable status for at least 15 years. So, finally, before I ask Chris Day and Rusty to come to the podium, I would like to touch briefly on just a couple of other issues. The traffic on Sweeten Creek Road and Mills Gap Road, as well as across the city, can be difficult, particularly during the commute times. However, the developer of this project, or any other project, cannot unilaterally make the traffic congestion occurring in this city go away. However, this developer can, and has done so, by removing the commercial uses which were proposed in the original project, and by adding multiple traffic mitigation enhancements adjacent to the project, which Chris Day will discuss with you in some detail. He can assure you and the neighbors that this project, at a minimum, will not increase the severity of the current traffic situation, and we believe that the city's traffic engineer, who is present tonight, can agree with that conclusion. This project not only will provide an additional $650,000 per year in ad valorem taxes to the city of Asheville and Buncombe County, but will also provide South Asheville, the South Asheville community, with a much-needed and very-low-impact use. I think we should all keep in mind that the current industrial zoning of the property allows many uses, and I can put them up here, but they include concrete plants, tractor-trailer terminals, truck distribution centers, motor vehicle repair facilities, arenas, and other types of uses such as that. And I hope you'll agree that those traffic impacts would be much more serious than the proposed project before you tonight. Now, finally, I'm getting ready to sit down. There has been some concern expressed about the environmental condition of the site. Partner Engineering of North Carolina, a national environmental consulting firm, has reviewed not only the former Phase II environmental assessment report provided by Alpha Environmental Services, Inc., in 2010, when the project was purchased, but they've also performed both a Phase I environmental site assessment in December of last year, and a Phase II subsurface investigation in March of 2016. And these reviews and assessments reveal no evidence of recognized environmental conditions in connection with this property. So, we will hope, we will hope that you will give this proposal every possible consideration. I think the traffic enhancements you'll be very interested in. I personally think they will make, even with the project in place, that they will make this intersection a much more usable intersection. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Chris Day of Civil Design Concepts to come forward and give you some more of the specific details of those enhancements. So, thank you very much, and I hope you'll give this proposal every consideration. Thank you.
Can we ask a question? Do we have some questions? Too late?
Let's do the three speakers and ask their questions.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, my name is Chris Day with Civil Design Concepts. I would like to thank Vidella and all of staff for their assistance with this project. It's been a long process, and they've been very helpful. I'd also like to thank Planning and Zoning and the community at large. This project has had a lot, as Lou made reference, we've had two town hall meetings and numerous conversations with the residents in the area to understand their concerns on the project, and the input was heard and the project was revised. As previously mentioned, when this project originally came to the TRC and the first time to Planning and Zoning, it actually was on 20, it included four buildings on 25 acres of industrially-zoned land, and also included four out parcels along the intersection of Mills Gap and Sweeten Creek Road. Based upon the feedback that we heard, we went back and we said, what can we do to take this and condense it down? 10 acres of the rear, this area in the back, 10 acres of existing industrial property was removed from the project. Project was condensed down to two four-story buildings, and all of the commercial out parcels were removed along the front of the, the front of the property or the project in whole. The property, or the project does propose two four-story buildings around a central courtyard, a community clubhouse, as well as amenity areas with a pool, dog-walking areas, and, and the project lives, basically, it stair steps up the hill. If you're familiar with the existing building, the existing building sits just about in between these, the proposed buildings. From the intersection at Mills Gap up, we've got about 20 to 25 feet of elevation change up to the first building. The second building then stair steps up another 15 feet. All of these buildings are oriented to try and maximize views this way. If you're familiar with the site, it's incredible long-range views out to the southwest. The modifications that I made reference to, by removing the commercial, commercial components of the project, it reduced the traffic associated with the project by 40 percent in the morning peak hour and by 70 percent in the afternoon peak hour. Speaking of traffic, and Lou and Vidella both mentioned it, we are all very aware of the fact that the traffic in this area is really bad, especially in the evening time, between 4:00 and 6:00, as you come home. It's a, it's a large problem, and the, we're very aware of it, and the DOT is aware of it. The road improvements that Lou made reference to that are associated with this project are not designed to solve the current problems that are out there. They're designed to meet the city ordinance and to mitigate the traffic associated with this project. And they're really going as far as, as far as feasible with this project, all of the right-of-way along the, along the property frontage will be improved, as well as the developer has coordinated with Duke Energy, who owns the lot across diagonally, to provide additional traffic improvements on that intersection. So, the improvements that are being proposed are really intended to mitigate the traffic so that it stays at a constant level that's out there today. Those improvements include, as I made reference, the eastbound right-turn lane that'll be added, the traffic study that was performed, proposed to mitigate this by adding 100-foot of storage. We've had further conversations with Duke Energy and can expand that, really, all the... We've had further conversations with Duke Energy and can expand that, really all the way back to the railroad right-of-way, to be greater than 200 feet of storage. The project will propose a 350 feet of storage for the left turn movement, as well as 100 feet of storage to turn into the apartment complex. The driveway, the main primary access to the site was aligned with the existing driveway, as well as with Castile Lane to create a safe intersection there. And then the secondary access was pushed as far away from the intersection as possible, and then limited to a right-in, right-out only. The final traffic improvement is just to re-signalize, basically re-optimize, the way the signals work at that intersection, so that with the improvements, the traffic flows in a more optimized manner there, to that, which goes further to include and mitigate these issues. The property also, or the project also proposes to provide sidewalks along all the frontage, sidewalk connections internally with accessible routes down. As I made reference to the topography here, we've also got stairs, landscape stairs coming down. These sidewalks will also be included with pedestrian amenities and a crosswalk here. The project includes over 450 feet of off-site sidewalk that head down Mills Gap Road and towards, across the railroad tracks to tie into the existing sidewalk that's in front of the Palisades project. The primary thing that we wanted to focus on from the community's issues was really the timing of this project. I've just wrapped up another large apartment complex in the county that the developer came in, they focused on building the buildings, building the pads, and getting tenants in there, and then they went back and did the improvements that DOT required, such as the turn lane to come in. The developer on this project has committed to putting in all of the NC DOT traffic improvements on the front end of the project, so that they would be in place, and actually be in place prior to the building permit being pulled in 2018. One item that I did want to also reference was the sidewalk that crosses this way. The railroad here is actually owned by Blue Ridge Southern Railways. I've had multiple conversations with the Blue Ridge Southern Railways, as well as their parent company, Watco Companies, and CDL Electric, who supervises their signals. The item for that, what we do want to do right now, it's a condition that that be done prior to the building permit. We have no issue with the road improvements being done prior to the building permit. However, the crossing here, the Blue Ridge Southern, is fully, they say they have no issue with providing, allowing us to do that. They referenced the fact that they'll put a panel in between the tracks to allow an accessible route over it. What we did talk about was the fact that currently today, this is only a two-lane road that crosses the railroad tracks. And with the TIP projects that Lou made reference, that will widen that area. And so what we want to do is make sure that that project is coordinated with the DOT plans and the railroad. So all the work within the railroad right-of-way, we would ask that that be, the condition be basically placed that we coordinate with the DOT on that for proper design and installation and timing of that work. Just as a point of reference, at about 450 linear feet, the city of Asheville's fee in lieu of sidewalk amount, that equates to about $20,000 of developer-proposed improvements off-site there. Basically, that, I think, handles everything from my end. If you have any questions, I am available to discuss. And with that, I invite Mr. Pulliam to come up and discuss a little bit more about the project.
Can I ask a quick question about the railroad?
I'm just going to try to get through.
Everybody?
That's all right.
That's fine.
Mayor, council members, I'm Rusty Pulliam, the developer of the proposed project. Thank you for having us this evening. I would like to get, Madilla, if you can show me how to work this, I'd like to get this screen back up on the screen. The very first one there. Yeah, looking down Mills Gap. That's good. That's good there. One of you guys has noticed, is part of, part of the reason that, certainly, I don't believe that this is an industrial site, is the fact that if you look at that, as Madilla said, this is the gateway going down Mills Gap Road. And part of the road widening is going to take place where they're going to put a turn lane from the mouth of Sweeten Creek and Mills Gap here, two miles down to Western Road.
We don't see a frame.
So the, this is the mouth and the gateway to, look at all that, that is all zoned residential. I want everyone to understand, everything behind this plant of any size is zoned residential. So you wouldn't want to have an industry right in the middle of the mouth going back to all those homes. The building has been sitting vacant for nine years. I have the real estate agent here to speak who had it listed for five years. The current owner from Charlotte bought it in 2012. It's been sitting vacant for nine years. The building is 52 years old. It is valued by the county. It's an 81,000-square-foot building. The county has a value of $148,000. That's $1.82 a square foot. It's an obsolete building. Even though this site is three and a half miles from I-26, you have to work hard to get through traffic lights and traffic to get tractor-trailers in and out of this site. I want to kind of give you guys a little history lesson of some changes that's transpired in South Asheville, if you'll give me a minute. Madilla, how do I get? Being a native of South Asheville and having developed 62 properties over the last 32 years in this area, certainly I've seen a lot of change. In this area here, I would call that the highest density of mixed use that we have in the city, with a tremendous amount of commercial property on Hendersonville Road, as well as a total of 1,908 apartments along that corridor. I do want to make a point that in Madilla's presentation, he showed several of those apartments, 90% of those have their driveway entrance on Hendersonville Road, not on Sweeten Creek Road. The other two, the Palisades is on Mills Gap Road, and Gerber Park, that's being developed by Givens Estates, access is on Gerber Road. So none of those have access on Sweeten Creek. 95% of that traffic is getting on Hendersonville Road. Speaking of traffic, I did want to voice again what Lou had said, that our traffic study does show that we do not make this situation any worse at this intersection. With the road improvements that we're going to spend upwards of close to 400,000, will not make this situation worse than it is right now, but will actually improve it somewhat. And I think the city's traffic engineer who's here this evening will also verify that. I do want to point out that the neighbors, I do not think have an issue with me or with the apartment project, that they will show you pictures of traffic with times on it from 4:45 to 5:45 at night on the going-home side of Sweeten Creek Road. If you look at that picture, you will notice the traffic gets backed up on the going-home side, the southern side, and the traffic is free on the north side. I could put every single one of us in a bus right now at night between 4:45 and 5:45 and drive down Merriman Tunnel Road, Patton, Lester Highway, Hendersonville Road, Long Shoals Airport Road, and on the going-home side of the road during that hour, there's heavy traffic. So I want everyone to understand, Sweet Creek Road doesn't have a traffic problem during other times of the day. It does have it during that hour. And of course, Chris did allude to the fact that coming soon, the NC DOT is going to widen Sweeten Creek Road and Mills Gap Road. I certainly would not be developing this project if I did not believe that the state was going to come in and make major improvements at this site. I also want to point out that we had two town hall meetings, not one, but two. During those meetings, I think there was a lot of the neighbors really understood the full magnitude of our project. And I think, once they looked at the big picture, and they looked at the by-right zoning that allows a myriad of worst-traffic-impact uses on this site, that they backed off and they get the fact that they wouldn't want a civic center there, they wouldn't want a concrete plant there, they wouldn't want a tractor-trailer terminal there. At a nice multifamily complex that is adjoining a huge amount of residential area, it is the highest investment use for. I do want to touch a little bit on affordable housing. Lou did a very, very good job on that, you know, the Boeing study, again, stating, I'm preaching to the choir, but there is a need for 5,600 housing units. My 272 is 4.7% of that, it's a drop in the bucket. I will be the first developer in the history of Asheville-Buncombe County to do 15% affordable for 15 years. I'm setting a precedent for other developers to come before you. I also listened. I listened to Planning and Zoning. I met several, several times with Vijay, who was a pleasure to work with, First Class Cop. And met and listened at all the town hall meetings, and listened to some of you guys on council. So we did go back, and we made a change to where we have agreed to develop the road improvements first, to do those first, to make sure that the fear that that was not going to get completed, you know, before the end of the project. So we're going to do that in 2017, and hope to start construction on the building in In closing, I would like to say again, Asheville is not in an industrial crisis. There's industrial land all over the county. Be glad to show you several parcels. Second, we need affordable housing. And I have worked well with everyone in the VAW, from the neighbors to planning and zoning, and we listened, and we feel like that we have crafted the right project for this location, and I would ask for your support this evening.
Thank you.
Do you all have any other speakers for the applicant?
Only technical, if those of you have questions.
Okay, before we open up the public hearing, if members of council have questions for the applicant or for staff, this would be a good time. There will be other opportunities.
I have a question, or a couple of questions for the applicant.
Okay. These are questions for the applicant. You all maybe listen to the question, decide who needs to come and answer them.
I'm new at this, so I don't know if I'm even asking a question that's legal to ask, but I would like to know, when this property was purchased in 2012, what was paid for this property? Is that something I can ask?
Well, that's a public record. We can.
Yeah, and with respect to legislative matters, you've got a lot of leeway, as long as it's related to the property and the project, so it's not as restrictive as a court.
So my question would be, how much was paid for the property in 2012? How much the property was listed on the market for since then? That's my two questions.
I don't know who you all want to speak to that. You'll decide.
Current leader of the chair, you have a lot of time.
Okay. And the second question was about the listing. So I don't, okay.
My name is Fred Calagery. I'm the managing partner for Mills Gap LLC. We bought the property in 2012, including different fees around, we paid $1,300,000 for the property in 2012. We looked at the property, trying to figure out what to do with it, and we've listed, we listed the property, obviously for a profit over that, and we started listing it for $2 million. We bought the property at somewhat what I would call a good discount, because the existing owner, who were the people that owned the plant, they were a Australian, I believe it was an Australian company, that had moved out of the plant, and had been offering it for sale for a long period of time, and they, I think, had the property on the market for a million and a half, million and six. We structured a lower price because we did close quickly on the property for them, which is what they wanted to do. So that's what we did.
That was the last price it was on the market for? A million and eight?
I don't, no, the listing price now is probably closer to $2.5 million. We got some, we got some offers over and above $2 million that didn't, the people did not close, did not go forward with the project. So as the price kept getting bid up and bid up, we just, we kept raising the listing price up to where it is now.
And you may not know the answer to this, but if we rezone this tonight for residential use, any idea what the value of the property would be at that point? What would be the, do you know what the estimated value of the property might be if we approve this zoning change here tonight?
I don't, I mean, typically, values for apartment use is in the range of $8,000 to $10,000 per unit, is what a developer is willing to pay for that. So I would guess that would be what you could figure the value of it would be.
Not so good at math.
Two, 2.7 million.
How much is that?
Well, and to clarify, though, for a CZ, for a CZ, Gordon, just to, just wait till I have a.
You got a little sidebar.
Yeah, so one of my concerns about your question, Brian, about what would it be worth if we rezoned the property, I think, one point of clarity, this would be a rezoning just for this very specific purpose, and I.
I mean, I think it's okay for you to consider as a part of your decision about whether it will further the health and safety and the comprehensive plan, as whether it would bring an additional value in tax dollars to the city.
My concern here would be that, you know, if we do this, then are other folks going to come and buy up industrial property, hold on to it a few years, and then try to come to us to get us to zone it residential, just because it increases the value of the property? Then we have further loss of industrial zone properties.
I guess I'm not quite understanding. Is this property under contract for sale right now?
It is.
Right, and it's conditioned on this rezoning?
Correct. And I would like to make a point, that one of Brian's questions was, prior to this, it was under contract before, twice, and the people that were under contract were not going to use it as an industrial use. They were going to come in front of council to try to rezone it, to do exactly what we're trying to do, because they see it as also, as the highest investment use. To answer your other question, Brian, the property tax on the site today is $14,000 a year. When we're completed, we estimate $650,000 tax base to the city and county. Over 20 years, that's $15 million. So hopefully that will answer your question.
Also, I guess I would say that each zoning case is considered on its own merits, so it's not like a law case where a precedent is bonding on a future decision.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
So I had a question, Chris, I think this is for you, about the railroad crossing. And you said, I think what I heard you say is that you wanted to wait to do that piece of it until the DOT project on Mills Gap Road is done. And my question is, is that true for that entire segment of sidewalk, or just the railroad piece? piece? Because the two, those two need to tie in together, right?
Let me get my bearings. Okay, so this is the crossing area right here. And really what I'm looking for is, as mentioned already, the DOT has two funded transportation projects that are underway. Those take a long time to move forward. The Mills Gap one is actually in front of Sweeten Creek with it scheduled to obtain right away in 18 and for construction to start in 21 on that project. What we're looking to do is coordinate with DOT and give them time to actually develop what that plan looks like so that when we put the sidewalk in on the off-site portion, that it is done in concurrence with their designs.
With that project.
And so while we're, the design, the improvements that are, the road improvements for vehicles, we're fully good with putting in prior to building permits, we're looking to coordinate those off-site sidewalk with the DOT and railroad.
That makes sense to me. Do we have other questions for the applicant before we open the public hearing? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing, and let me just say a few things about the public hearing portion of this item. Typically, we run the public hearing portion for no longer than an hour. And if we get to that hour mark, then council will decide whether or not we want to keep going. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Watch the lights on the lectern, the green is go, yellow means you're getting close to the end, and red will happen with a buzzer and that means stop. If you are speaking on behalf of a group, you need to have three people waive their time for you to speak, and you can speak for up to 10 minutes. The three people that waive their time cannot speak on this item. So with that, if you'll just raise your hand and I'll open the public hearing and we'll recognize speakers. Okay, straight there in the back.
Good evening, honorable mayor, distinguished city council representatives. I'm Pastor Hardaway from Rock Hill Mission Baptist Church. I'm a concerned citizen. Also would like to say appreciate the support our community gives and that you have city council approved for Community Summer Day Camp that you gave last year, and hopefully we're on the docket for this year as well, source of support. But I'm here to say I support the proposal. I've often heard that, someone once said that a bird in the hand is worth more than two in the bushes. And so I think the bird in the hand right now is that for affordable housing. I'm for future jobs and the industrial park may be and may have the potential for someone to come in and purchase and provide the kind of jobs. But the property that will offer affordable housing is something we have in hand. We all know that there's an affordable housing issue in Asheville. And some of you, as candidate Rand has, an advocate for affordable housing. Even city council has said that affordable housing is important and would like to negotiate with property builders, construction workers or construction builders to provide some kind of affordability for housing. I think that's important, so I can support it. I wish you would say 20 years for, 20% for 20 years, but 15% for 15 years, I think that's something that we can support. And so again, my support goes out for the bird that we have in the hand as it's worth more than the two that we can find in the bushes. Thank you.
And Pastor Hardaway started us off right, just say your name when you begin.
Okay, great. I'm Michael Woods, I'm the executive director of the Western Carolina Rescue Ministry, which is the largest emergency shelter in all of western North Carolina. I'm in support of this project for several reasons. One, currently right now with our rescue program, our recovery program, we have a total of 142 people staying at the rescue mission right now. I just got the text for tonight. And out of those 142, we have 68 of them that are currently working, with many of them working on multiple jobs. Our problem is, is that they are working, saving money, they can't find housing. And working with a private developer and especially this project will allow us to be able to be able to move some of our folk into market rate, safe, clean type of housing. There's, for us, this is a win. We're excited about it. I mean, I have had multiple conversations with many developers, even developers that are developing apartments around us, and they have no interest in building affordable housing. And this opportunity for us presents great things for us. And so we're excited about this. We know that, we know that we need more developers building more units, and the more units that are going to be built is going to drive down prices. And so we're excited to be able to have an opportunity to be able to place some of our residents in some of this housing. Plus 10% of the folk that we have that are working right now work at Givens Estates. And so we're excited about the opportunity of being able with some of the new development that Givens Estates is doing and our Clean Start Program, our job training program, that they're going to be eligible to actually hire more. So, and that gives them an opportunity to live on the same side where they could possibly work.
Thank you, thank you. In the front.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, car swice good. I feel like I have as much in this at stake as anybody. I live on Kane Creek Road, I drive by the property every day, I have for the last 22 years, I've seen a lot of changes. This piece right here is my convenience store, two acres. And I feel like what has been proposed, not only will get rid of a eyesore on Mills Gap Road, but I do remember when they were letting 300 employees out at the plant in the morning time, that you couldn't get through there either. So not only did I have industrial piece about four miles down the road that y'all did the, down Sweeten Creek, but also did the apartments there. I had that piece listed for eight years of John Spake, and we did not have one offer on it as industrial piece. So I sold that about two, two and a half years ago, so I do not feel like the industrial aspect is a valid challenge to keep this from happening. And my bigger concern is that is South Asheville doesn't need another CTS, you know, problem. We've been fighting that for the last 10 years. And I feel like we've got some responsible developers that are willing to do this. And it's obvious that city needs a tax base since y'all are pushing a $60 million bond. So I would recommend approval of this and appreciate that you're listening to me, thank you.
Thank you. Seventy-four million, just... Gordon, yes, over here, yeah. Okay, I'm very impressed already.
No, I got a powerpoint with pictures, I'm sorry.
Okay, who's waiving their time for this?
All right, excuse me. Chandler Yuley, Karen McNulty, and William Johnston.
Okay, thank you. Will you three raise your hand? Yep, okay, got it, great, thank you.
Great, all right, well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. First off, thank you for the opportunity to be here. You know, before I get too far into this, you know, one of the things that I wanted to start off with is to thank you all for the time and the effort, both you personally and the staff. There's been a lot of talk about South Asheville's voice not being heard in the news. You know, I want to know, for everyone in South Asheville to know, I've met with many of you multiple times, we've talked via email, via phone, and what I found is both staff as well as council members were very interested in what was going on, very concerned about the impact on South Asheville. I work across the country on these type of issues and deal with councils across the country and have not found one that is as engaged and accessible as you are. And so let me first off and thank you for that.
Could we get that taken?
Could you mention that to the North Carolina House of Representatives, please?
Of course, it's going to do a lot of good, surely. I wouldn't have it to. Let me talk a little bit about what we've been doing here, and I want to talk a little bit about some of the views and thoughts of some South Asheville residents. You know, we developed a group as part of this effort. And as you all know, because you've received several hundred emails, that over 400 individuals at some time in this opposed this project and had some concerns. This was beginning way back at the beginning when Rusty was proposing the commercial aspects. Now, obviously that has changed over time, and I'm going to talk about some of the different positions that folks have been in. We've held town hall meetings ourselves, we've engaged people through email, and I've talked to a lot of people on the phone. What I've kind of noticed is that folks have really fallen into three different categories. And I'll tell you where I am at the end of this, but I'll also kind of tell you where folks have fallen, and then those who are here can talk about it themselves as well. There is one group here, and this is a group that says, you know, we're not necessarily opposed to apartments at this site, but we're concerned about the timing. And one of the big concerns is, you'll hear it about traffic, is that they don't believe that this recurrent infrastructure can support another apartment complex. Vidilla mentioned the various apartment buildings that are going up. We are in the midst of an apartment boom. We have not yet felt the full effects of that in South Asheville. And that intersection, as most of you know, if you've driven through it, is notorious in the morning and the evening rush. There's also a lot of land along the Sweeten Creek corridor and Mills Gap that can be developed by right. And there's nothing we can potentially do about that, and so that's a concern as well. And so this group, I think if you think about it, they'll talk to you about it, is kind of concerned, not necessarily with an apartment project per se, but the timing of it. And what I have on slide five here is we've been talking a lot with Ken Putnam of the city, who has also made himself very accessible about the widening of the timeline of Sweeten Creek Road. This is a timeline that he's provided us, everything up until 2024 is what he's provided us. But essentially, you know, if you're looking in terms of when this thing could actually be completed, it's probably not until 2024 that we're going to see Sweeten Creek Road being widened. And I do just want to raise one question when the applicant gets back up. I know they talked about a Mills Gap Road widening, I wasn't aware though that the widening would take place on that side of Mills Gap Road. I thought that project was on the other side of Sweeten Creek Road, and so I just have a question about the concern about the railroad track going over, because I didn't think it was expanding that side of Mills Gap Road. The second group shares similar concerns of the first group, but would like to actually see the city acquire this parcel and use it either as a park or as a community center. You know, this is a group that is, as South Asheville has grown, as we've gotten more populated, you know, is concerned that, you know, the city overall has about 54 parks and 11 community centers. South Asheville only has two parks and one community center. And one of those is Jake Rusher, and we appreciate some of the concern that's being expressed today about the bonds. But, you know, would like to see a little more, to see that site used for that. The third group, and I will actually say that I'm part of this group, is a group that I would say is permitting the project but adding two additional conditions to address the traffic. And Rusty has talked about those, and we'll get into those in a second. But, you know, you can kind of categorize us as not being thrilled about another apartment complex, but we don't think this site is going to sit vacant, we just don't. And that a residential apartment complex would probably have a lower impact on traffic than other likely uses. I'm not worried about a concrete plant going there, I'm not worried about a tractor-trailer plant going there. But folks who aren't affiliated with this project said that you could potentially use a site as a shopping center or a strip mall at some point. That would obviously require your approval to do so, but that's not out of the ordinary to have happen. And the residents along this corridor would like to keep this area as residential as possible. But the two concerns that the group had, and I'll say that Rusty has addressed those in the conditions we have, that he's agreed to now. Number one was extending a right-hand turn light on Mills Gap to have over 200 feet of storage. So that is basically taking it as far back to the railroad tracks as possible. And the other concern was to complete those traffic improvements at the beginning of the project. And if we, you know, those were concerns that we wanted to make sure would get done, you know, if the project occurs. And so the rationale behind this, and I think this is kind of important to know particularly for you all and for the folks who are part of the group, is, you know, the rationale again is this, we're not thrilled about having more apartments and more developers around this area, but the traffic improvements should improve the traffic flow at this intersection. We don't have much hope that the NC DOT is going to do this on their own, we just truly don't. And we think making this impact would be important. The NC DOT did put in a right-hand turn light on Mills Gap Road, which significantly improved traffic in the morning on that intersection, and we're hopeful this would do it as well. Also, that given the site, we don't think this site will sit vacant, if we have an apartment complex that won't come online until 2020, you know, depending upon the NC DOT timeline, which I know is always up in the air, the complex would be complete in 2020, and Sweeten Creek Road widening, if it holds, would be completed around 2024. So we'd be looking at a four-year overlap, which could potentially be helpful. And then finally, the pedestrian areas, particularly the signal heads and the extension of the sidewalk along the railroad tracks. And I think that's a very important, you know, point that I want to make as well. We have Givens Estates, which is nearby, we have some brave souls from Givens who actually make the trek to try and get to Earth Fair, and I've seen one brave wanderer walker try and cross the railroad tracks. And having an actual sidewalk over there, I think, would be very important. So, you know, in conclusion here, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have and the time I have remaining, you know, I did want to thank you all, I want to thank Vidilla Sivika in particular, I want to thank Jeff as well from Traffic who's spending an ordinary amount of time with us, answering our questions and, you know, really going out of their way to listen, and we appreciate it. And the final point, you know, that I want to make here, in this process and this project in particular, I highlighted it, but just the need for us as residents of South Asheville, as developers, as city council, as county as well, and NC DOT to figure out what to do with this area, particularly as Sweeten Creek Road is going to be widened, assuming that does happen, and making sure we get something that we actually would like to have. So this doesn't turn into a mini I-26 project on the south side of the city. And so there's a group of us who is already organized, you'll hear this group called SCAN. Pat Deck is in the audience, who has worked very hard on these issues. And we plan to meet before you again when that time arises. So we appreciate your time, we appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one. Did you say that there initially were 500 folks that were against this project?
There were 400 folks who agreed to sign on to a letter expressing concern about the project and opposing it at some point.
Okay. And of those folks, how many do you feel still oppose us?
You know, I think this is, you know, it's hard, we didn't do a poll, so let me put it that way. You know, I think you would probably see about, in the conversations I've had, it's probably about half-half. I mean, it's probably about half the people who are concerned about this. You know, I haven't, given that Rusty made those other two changes as it related to the traffic, you know, I'm not exactly sure, but, you know, my best guess would probably be about half-half.
I feel like this was a professional presentation, so we have like a moment for questions. So it was great job, BJ, and thank you for all your work on this, really helped with communications and...
Well, thank you for the time, Dan.
I'm Marlene Johnson, I'm just too close. I live at 604 Crowfields, which is really 1745 Hendersonville Road. I'm a volunteer with groups that are helping the homeless in the area. However, we're opposed to four-story buildings as the mountain views are all disappearing around us. Eventually, we could look up at high-density residences like Daly City, south of San Francisco. Are any of you old enough to remember that song? Are any of you old enough to remember that song, "Ticky-tacky Little Houses All on Hill"? I must be showing my age. That zoning destroyed the natural beauty south of San Francisco in their hillside areas. Our quality of life, losing views of our beautiful mountains, is compromised by tall buildings with high density. Whatever you decide, we ask for lower-density zoning with two-story building height limits. This proposal is beginning at 40 feet, excuse me, elevation going up four stories. There are also traffic, and I have Dingle Creek in my backyard, so there are some flooding issues with this also. We just ask that you consider something lower density. Thank you.
If you have any questions. Anyone else? Are you in the back? Whichever.
It's getting complicated now.
Hi. I'm Gloria Williams, and I have lived on Mills Gap Road for 47 years. I raised my kids. And when my husband and me were looking for a housing out that way, we were looking for schools, for workplaces and stuff. So we ended up on Mills Gap Road, and we've liked it ever since. So I'm looking forward to something that would be more in favor of giving people housing, because back then, we couldn't hardly find a house. And now, people are still finding a house they can afford. So to me, this would be a good idea to put something that's upscale, and that would be improvement to our community, and it would be also bringing some revenue. And I know it would be upscale, because I've seen other places that have been built by the builders. It also produces jobs for carpenters and a lot of other heavy equipment people and a lot of other people. It creates jobs in the meantime. So I really think that this would be a really, an opportunity for Mills Gap Road to have something this nice at the corner of Mills Gap Road. Now, the people that will be living in this building area, when they come out of there, it is so close to that light that traffic's not going to be backed up. And how many people out of this many apartments is going to come out at one time? I mean, it's not like letting 300 people come out of an industrial place. So I don't really think that that would have any bearing on our traffic anymore than anything else. As a matter of fact, I think it might flow easily, because they are going to make a turning lane for the go-in to that facility. So it just excites me to know that there would be something there for people that need a place to live, and they can't afford a down payment. I mean, a lot of people are having to do that now because of the situation and because, like me, I'm getting older. And it might be that I have to move into a place where the upkeep is already took care of. So to me, it would be really a good thing for our community and South Asheville. We need a lot of things, but we need things that we can hold on to.
Thank you. Yes. And then let's put someone on deck. So why don't you be on deck?
Pat Deck on deck.
Pat Deck on deck.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. For me, I drive up and down this road every day and have for 25 years.
State your name.
We used to have a...
Your name.
Jim Andrews, sorry.
Sorry.
We used to have a traffic problem. The DOT turning lane coming down Mills Gap to Sweeten Creek has pretty much eliminated that. And I look at this from the pros and the cons and what could go there. And I can't tell you how many times the industrial plant that was there before, I think it was plastic form or plastipack, whatever it was, there were cars that would be going in and out of there between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock, jamming up traffic, and again, between 3:00 and 5:00. So we don't know what we've got. I agree with the pastor. If you have a bird in the hand, that you know what it is. It's clean. There's not an environmental impact. It's good, as far as what I see, and there's no traffic impact at this point. And with the improvements that they're going to make with apartment people that come in and out at various times of the day, it's not like you're bringing 300 or 400 people in at the same time, in or out. The other thing that nobody's even mentioned is the fact, me living there and traveling that road so often, in the wintertime, the tractors and trailers going in and out of that plant used to jam up during the winter, the snow, the ice. Jackknifed across the road, you couldn't get through. You'd have to turn around and go back and go back through Western Road or whatever. So the fact that this is a known entity for me is like, please, put it in there. For anybody that lives out there, if you think about an industrial, a CTS possibility, who knows what could go in there? The possibilities, nobody knows. This is, like the pastor said, a bird in the hand, and I personally would love to see you guys approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak on this? Scott will be on deck.
Thank you. Last September, city council kind of challenged us in Sweet Creek, especially, "South Asheville, you don't have a voice. You know, we don't hear from you." Well, I think all that's changed now. Vijay mentioned SCAN, so I want to talk a little bit about SCAN. You challenged us, and I think our communities have risen to the challenge. So currently, we have brought together the neighborhoods on South Sweeten Creek, Cimarron, Hollybrook, Ballantree, Park Avenue, the Views of Asheville, Windsor Park, and Givens Estates. And we've been meeting together as a group, and we call ourselves SCAN. And we, in the beginning, started meeting about the same time Rusty, and I guess I should probably thank him, decided to propose building apartments on Mills Gap. And the more we've met, the more we realize that what we really want to preserve in South Sweeten, and Sweeten Creek, the corridor that we're calling SCAN, South Sweeten Creek, is the residential aspect of that whole area, because that's what we consider to be the primary focus of why people move there, the quality of life. Now, traffic is a huge problem. We all know that. But every one of us who moved into that area helped create the traffic problem. So we have to acknowledge that. We are now working with Ken Putnam and North Carolina DOT, and we submitted our traffic suggestions for the widening of Sweeten Creek to him, as he asked us to do, and everybody signed on to that. I'll tell you, what he just mentioned, those big trucks, probably scares me more than anything, driving on Sweeten Creek or trying to get in and out of any place on Sweeten Creek. There are lots of them. I don't know how we control them, but we're really concerned about traffic, but we're more concerned, and I live at Givens Estates, if we didn't have that traffic light there, we wouldn't be able to get in and out. And the big trucks cause a huge problem for us. So thank you for pushing us to get organized, to have a voice. We'll be participating in a lot more things, and we've submitted, every one of these neighborhoods has submitted their plan on a page.
Yay.
So, and we have also submitted along with that a unified plan. So you're going to be hearing from us a lot. Thank you very much.
Now, before you go, did SCAN take a position on this item? Or...
Well, it's kind of like Vijay said. Most of the people who are on our SCAN, the officers of the HOAs, most everyone there is saying, yes, we support this now. We've learned a lot more about it than when we first started. Those 400 people who signed on and SCAN people, we didn't know all that Rusty had in mind or what he was going to do or how it was going to look, so people were reacting. And now we're trying to be proactive rather than reactive. So, yeah, I think most, everybody is supporting, yes.
Thank you. Name? Just Pat Deck.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pat Deck on deck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Scott, and then the gentleman in the green shirt in the back. Oh, and then Ben. Okay.
Hello, I'm Scott Dedman. I'm Executive Director of Mountain Housing Opportunities. Thank you for your service to our community. Thank you for your support for affordable housing, jobs, transportation, and our overall quality of life. I'm here to speak for the proposal in one regard, and that is our need for housing supply. Affordable housing supply, yes, but housing supply in most income ranges. This is the, a page of the Bowlin Report Executive Summary, and it shows in the area of need for family units and elderly units in different income ranges, 30% to 50% of median income, 50% to 80%, and 80% to 120% of median income. And surprising to me, at the time this came out, 18 months ago, the need for those in the 80% to 120% of area median income is as high or higher than in those other two income categories. And so, and also, in a general way, housing supply is important for our housing affordability. We have one housing market, not three separate and distinct housing markets in those income ranges. So I would say generally, please support this because of the importance of housing supply to our overall housing affordability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm William Uly. I've been a resident since 2012, after I retired from the military for 30 years. I just wanted to add my support for the proposal. I was one of the 400 that was against the initial proposal that Vijay talked about as one of the residents of South Asheville. I agree that I am now in that category three with the changes that Rusty has made and his willingness to talk to us and make this a better proposal. I think that will decrease the traffic impacts until the roads actually get widened. I would also say that, looking long-term, I also agree that this is a much better use for what we'd be looking for in the area, more residential, as opposed to commercial or another industrial use. I'm also a member of the SCAN committee, and I know it was asked how many of the 400 had changed. I have not taken a poll either, but I would just note, and I know many of the other people that were here for the other two committee meetings, they were probably 85% expressed opposition to the proposal because of the traffic. And as you've seen from tonight, most of those people are not here anymore. And so either they've changed their minds, or they're not as strongly opposed as they were when they started. Since the majority now are in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Fenty, I'm the Executive Director of the Economic Development Coalition, Senior Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce. And if there's anything that I feel secure in, is that my belief and advocacy over the last seven, seven and a half years in jobs. We wake up in the morning, we think about jobs. We go to sleep at night, and we think about jobs. And that is our mission. And over the last number of years, that has produced more than $1 billion worth of activity or capital investment, the majority of which is in the city. And we appreciate your partnership to make that happen. But those jobs take a number of things. It takes housing. It takes infrastructure. It takes companies offering those jobs. And typically, when you see me come and stand before you, I'm here talking about those very specific companies and that very specific activity. You haven't seen me here talking about multifamily housing in any way. And tonight, I continue, I want to continue that streak and not talk about a specific multifamily housing project, but I am going to talk to you about this site as an industrial site and the competitiveness of this industrial site. So if you did kind of an informal ranking of industrial sites, A sites compete nationally, B sites compete regionally, C sites compete locally or they're in local transfers. This site would clearly be a C site. I think some of the activity that you might have seen in there would represent that. The current condition of the property would probably suggest some sort of distribution of anything which would be lower skill, lower number of jobs, and that is not the strategic plan that we are working toward with having living wages and higher wages for our constituents. So I would just say that the future for this site as an industrial property specifically is not strong. One, because the developer has suggested by right, it's not their intent to make an industrial site. Two, the logistics, everything that you've heard from the surrounding neighborhoods of traffic applies to logistical situations of distribution centers as well. And the proximity to some of these residential entities would make it difficult to attract global world-class companies there. So with that said, I just wanted to talk about the competitiveness of the site.
We appreciate you coming down tonight. If anybody has a question, since we have been on the issue of industrial rezoning...
Sorry, could I have one last thing, which is, this is not negate the fact that we still need to look at industrial sites that we do have and determine their appropriateness and competitiveness for future use.
Anybody have a question? Thanks for coming down. Folks, we normally take a break right around now, and we do have a closed session, so we would take care of our closed session during that break. But before I decide with my council whether or not that's a good idea, please raise your hand if you plan to speak on this item, so I can get an idea of how many more speakers we've got. I got one, two. Raise them like really high, like really high. One, two, three, four, five. Anyone else? I got five? That's it? All right, let's barrel onward. All right, so let's start in the back. John?
Good evening. My name is John Spake. I am, I've been asked to speak to the history of the building. I had the building listed for Spotless when they closed the facility. I'm a native of South Asheville. I grew up on Williams Road, which is off of Mills Gap Road, and I currently live on Mills Gap Road, and I have for 10 years, so I know the site very well. I was hired by Spotless in August of 2008 to market the property. Of course, that was prior to the recession. We finally sold the property in December of '13. I think that's February '12. It was actually December of '13. We worked with EDC and the State Commerce Department on marketing the property, and in the five years, we had no industrial prospects step up for the building, no matter what the price reduction we put on the property was. According to the EDC data that I received today when I inquired about projects that had happened during that period, from the period of August 8 of '08 to September of '15, there were 39 EDC projects announced in Asheville, Bunkham County, and none of them chose a site. So that was a seven-year period. And you ask why? Why? Because this site does not fit what industrial users are looking for today. This area of South Asheville is more of a residential and retail corridor. The industrial users want easy access to the interstate. They don't have that. One good example of that is Budweiser. It was located in the southwest quadrant of this intersection since 1971, and in 2003... And in 2003, they relocated Rutledge Road off Airport Road for easier access to the interstate. Another recent example is the Electronics Plant, which is located a half a mile south on Sweet Creek Road. That property sold last, well, it was middle of June of this year. It was a 65,000 square foot pla- plastic injection molding facility with two clean rooms, certified clean rooms. Who bought it? U-Haul bought it. And they're putting climate-controlled storage in a U-Haul moving center where you rent trucks and boxes for moving. Um, I heard tonight about traffic. I know the roads very well because I lived there. And one thing that I, I decided to do was talk to Spotless about who their employees were. And they had 400 employees in that facility. They received 15 round-trip trucks per day, in addition to two to three delivery trucking trucks per day, plus UPS and FedEx. So that's at least equal or maybe more traffic than the apartment complex. Um, as a resident of Mills Gap Road, we've dealt with CTS my whole life. Um, and what we don't need is another closed ISOR plant. Um, you know, we, we, um, we can't simply make a site industrial by zoning it. So I hope that y'all will produce this project tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I saw some more folks. Yes, the gentleman in the back. Yes. And then who else did we have over here to speak? Yes, in the front. And was there one other person over here? All right. Stand in the center and use the smaller microphone.
Oh, all right. Good evening, members of the City Council. Thank you all for your work in behalf of all of us. My name is David Herbert. I live in South Asheville. I first would like to commend the staff for their recommending that this proposal not go forward. I appreciate a lot of courage behind that, because there is a lot of pressure to carry off what seems to be the manifest destiny, to cover every inch of soil in South Asheville with concrete. Um, and I think their voting against it, at least, lets the note out that not everybody is favorable, uh, toward that. And, uh, at the same time, I realize the likely inevitability of the project. But I would at least say I wish that it could be held off until the actual completion of Sweet Creek Road. A little bit, I think I am speaking out for the 25,000 to 30,000 folks who drive that many vehicles at Down Hendersonville Road every day. And the screams that some of us want to make out into the void, that enough is enough. I don't think we can lightly, treat lightly, this issue of traffic. That adds greatly, or takes away from the quality of life for many, many people. There've been a couple of phrases mentioned tonight, I'd like to throw in another one, and that is that a man is not an island. In this case, a 272-unit development is not an island. It does not exist by itself. It has intended and unintended consequences on the community around it. Although much material has been performed about the importance of building more affordable housing and units, none of that supportive material has said, "Build it here." Uh, and I hope we don't fall for that. We're certainly not here to help, uh, owners close a mortgage, or developers close their, um, listings. If past is prologue, we need only to look at Hendersonville Road and the hodgepodge of disconnected properties all along it for any promise of an attractive promenade down to the south.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, my time is done.
I'm Reverend Scott Rogers, Executive Director of ABCCM. And, uh, Council, thank you again for supporting our Veterans Village project. I wanted to say that first and foremost. I'm coming to speak for the proposal for a couple of reasons. First, ABCCM worked with Pulliam Properties on this very site to evaluate it a little over a year ago. The building is in such poor condition to make it to the point where, uh, our property members said it needed to be leveled. We also looked at just the volume of traffic with donations of our trucks and tractors and tractor trailers, and just found the location to be very unsuitable, uh, even for that lower impact. So I agree with folks here that have already made a better case than I, like Mr. Green, about this being not necessarily the best, uh, location for industrial. Second is, we, uh, also are strong housing advocates, and I appreciated my colleague, Scott Dedman, outlining how important it is, because our office, just two miles to the south where our, uh, ABCCM South Crisis Ministry operates, uh, sees many working people, uh, and they just need a little help from their friends, and I'm so grateful to all of our neighbors that make that help possible. Uh, but what they need is good, stable, affordable housing, and, and I really believe that Rusty is continuing in that legacy, uh, as a responsible corporate member and developer. Lastly, I just want to speak to Rusty's character, because I've seen him on a number of occasions. When we have called him for help, and he's taken money out of his own pocket because we've needed to move a family in that can't afford the rents that are being charged, and he's made an extra way for those families. He's done that over and over again for the last 35 years that I've been here. His dad did it before him, he's doing it, uh, many of his partners and property managers are doing it. And so as a good neighbor, I encourage you to support this project.
Thank you. All right, I thought I saw one more hand over here, but, uh, yes, okay. And this is our final, final speaker during the public hearing.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, my name is Kenneth Williams. I've lived on Mills Gap Road for 47 years. And I have a small business. I've got nine guys that work for me. And to come to South Asheville, try to find affordable housing, it's impossible. It's impossible. Y'all ever priced it lately? I mean, these people's making $10, $12 an hour, they can't afford a $12, $1400 a month, uh, rent. So giving us affordable housing in South Bunkham is very huge for people that work on this end of the town. My guys are having to work, uh, drive from north end of town, west end of town, because they can't afford South Asheville. And now, if he's going to give us some affordable housing, I think that's a good idea. And I know you people have seen the projects that Mr. Pulliam has done over through the town. He does a great job of anything he does. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I didn't see anyone else who raised their hand to speak, but if you mistakenly didn't raise your hand, you can do that now. If not, um, I want to close the public hearing. Um, Council, do you, do you want to keep going, or do you need to take? Keep going?
I think we need to wrap this up.
This is a test of endurance, all right, and hydration. All right. So do, before we deliberate on this, are there other questions, uh, of any of the staff or the applicant? Anything you need some clarity on? Nope? Okay. All right. Do, do, um, do we have a motion to be?
I'd like to make a comment, but, I'm sorry. Um, so I guess, when all this started, uh, back when, when the applicant first made it known that, that they would be, uh, coming to us for this and they had to go through P&amp;Z, there was a tremendous groundswell of opposition, I think 400-some, 500-some odd people. We were inundated with calls and emails and all other sorts of correspondence or whatever. And I think over that time period, the applicant has made a sufficient effort to be where they needed to be, which was in the community, speaking with community leaders and members to try to, uh, try to rectify some of the situations, the concerns that the community had, and mitigate some of the issues that were in regard to this project. Uh, I think, you know, the commercial came off, it reduced some of the traffic concerns and, and those things. This being an industrial, industrial, uh, parcel, you know, would, one would seem it would lend itself to, to job creation of some sort. However, it seems like, you know, this, this may be a good, uh, portion for residential, considering that we do need affordable housing. We also need just housing stock, period. But also in the sense of, this area is doing pretty well in job creation in itself. I think more recently, um, we've had 69 months of job growth, consecutive job growth, and we are, I think, 16, the top 16% of metro areas in job growth, so I don't think that is the most pressing issue. I guess what I'm also saying is, with that being said, I'm, I would stop short of saying a valiant effort, but a good effort from the applicant and, and creating, uh, a basis that other, other developers could look at as far as how to deal with community issues and mitigate some of these things in the community. I would like to make a motion, uh, to move to approve the conditional zoning request from industrial to highway business conditional zone for the construction of a 272-unit multifamily development located at the intersection of Sweeten Creek Road and Mills Gap Road, and find that the request is reasonable in the public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, because the project, one, will provide necessary rental housing through the adaptive reuse of property for residential infill development, and, two, developer will mitigate traffic congestion through infrastructure enhancements that will be completed before the issuance of the certificate, certificate of occupancy.
Keith, to clarify on your motion, we have a revised list of conditions at our seats that, that, would that motion include the revised list?
Yes, to also include Exhibit B1 conditions list, and I would also, yes, to include Exhibit B1, the conditions list.
Okay. We have a motion?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cecil, you?
Well, I was going to say, I was going to make the motion. I came in here slightly inclined to vote against this, but, uh, both because of the traffic issue and because of the, um, the loss of industrial site, and both of my, my concerns have been pretty much satisfied on that, so I concur.
I share Cecil's thoughts there as well.
Just want to say a couple of things. Um, I also agree that with those who've said that this area is transitioning from industrial to residential, um, in, in Julie's perfect world, this would, this site would actually be super-high-density mixed-use as part of making this a new, um, pedestrian multimodal node, uh, between, highly dense node between downtown and Biltmore Park, but that's not, that's not where we are right now. We definitely don't have the infrastructure for that, so this is, this is what we have. But the kind of density, I think, that was originally proposed is, is, is really where we need to be looking when we get the infrastructure. I also want to say thanks to all of the residents, all of those 400-plus people who sent us emails, um, back earlier in the spring, uh, and particularly to Vijay and to Pat for leading the community efforts to both pull your neighborhoods together, not just for this, um, but for the longer-term planning. There's, there's nothing like a good crisis to pull people together, and that's exactly what happened here. And hopefully it will stay together and, and you will continue to influence the, the future development of South Asheville. Um, I also want to thank Rusty and your team for being so responsive, the, the affordable housing, the street improvements, um, the sidewalk improvements, all of that is in direct response to everything that we heard from the community, and, um, you, uh, you really stepped up to the plate. And then to everybody else, I just want to say, I think this is a great example of how open-mindedness and open communication can make a difference in major developments. Um, I will remind people that when we approved some changes to the development ordinance a few months ago, there is now required a pre-meeting, required, no longer recommended, but required a pre-meeting between developers and the neighbors. And that is so that this exact kind of conversation can happen, so that we don't show up here in this room with everybody still fighting with each other. So I just want to commend that process to both, um, developers, skeptical developers and skeptical residents. The communication can happen, and this is a, this is a perfect example of that. Um, the, the final thing I, I will say, and I am going to support the project, but, is that we all need to be watching the DOT projects as they develop, and making sure that what they, what DOT is going to build is what we as a city want and what you as residents of South Asheville want. And that doesn't just happen. Um, we have to be there, we have to be a part of that conversation, and I know you all will be, and, uh, I think the city does plan to be there as well. So, thanks.
I'd toss in one more comment, and that is, I noticed on the aerials that the northeast corner of the property looks like it has a lot of mature trees, and I hope as many of those can be saved as possible. It's the, the, in the upper right, as you're looking at that picture. That's just, that's the input from the Tree Commission.
Seeing nodding out there. Um, I, to echo Julie's comments, I, I really appreciate everyone coming together to work hard on this project, and I think what's great about this experience is that you now have a framework for future discussions, because this is probably, well, this is absolutely not going to be the end of this kind of, um, proposal that we see in South Asheville. South Asheville's obviously the easiest area in the city to grow, because it's the flattest, and it runs south down into Henderson County and around the airport. So that's where we're seeing a lot of growth. I mean, I've had, uh, older folks in Asheville that grew up here tell me when they remember Hendersonville Road was a dirt road. Imagine that, imagine that to, today. So, um, and I, I just want to, um, uh, point out one, one item of irony here, and that is that, um, there was a bill proposed in the legislature that would undermine the use of conditional zoning, which is what this application is. This is a conditional zoning application, and what you've noticed about it is it really allows us to engage in a, a negotiation process, so that the neighborhood can ask for and request conditions, and the developer can agree to or not agree to, but there is definitely a give and take, and it allows the Council to help facilitate that negotiation, uh, to get to an end result that better fits both sides' needs. And, uh, there was a bill pending in the legislature this session that would, um, erode a lot of the pieces of conditional zoning, and our very own Senator Apodaca did not care for that bill. Uh, so, um, while he giveth and taketh away, uh, we, this session.
He giveth this time.
He giveth this time. So, uh, so, uh, hopefully, um, we'll be able to continue to use this, this zoning tool to be able to, to, um, help manage the growth of Asheville, because that's what, that's what we're facing. Any other, any other comments? All right. Um, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all. We'll give you a second. Why don't we do the closed session? Go ahead and read the motion for the closed session.
I move that the Asheville City Council-
Wait, wait, wait. Actually, can we do the-
The transit will go a long time.
That's going to be a long one.
That one's going to be long. It's going to be a long time.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-318.10A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. And, two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about potential matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including the-
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we will take a break until 8:05, according to that clock. I know every clock in this building's a little different, but according to that clock. I'm sorry. Double that, double that. We are on the new business portion of our agenda, and the first item is a consideration of transit management contract, and Assistant City Manager Kathy Ball is here. Is it Assistant City Manager now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So glad we've now simplified.
Settled on something.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. We come before you tonight with two recommendations regarding the management, the transit management contract, the first of which is a recommendation that you approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to reject all proposals for the management of the Asheville Transit System received from the RFP process. We have a second motion to move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to extend the current contract with First Transit on a month-to-month basis as needed to revise the RFP process. I think the most important thing I would convey here is that we have been in consultation with the Federal Transit Administration, and they have recommended to us that we, we make the motion that we, the request that we have made to you. We, I think, what I would like to spend just a little bit of time on is talking about moving forward, and so how we would move forward. So, we have made a recommendation to you to authorize the city manager to approve a contract with First Transit on a month-to-month basis. As you all are very familiar, we are required by law to have a management company that manages the day-to-day operations of the transit system. We are in the process, as per requested by the FTA, to redo the request for proposals process to be in strict alignment with their requirements, and we will be working toward that process in the next several months. We do not know how long that will take, but we assure you that we will do it as expeditiously but accurately as possible. So, because we don't have a defined period of time, that's the reason we're asking you to authorize the city manager to do a month-to-month. The month-to-month process will be, or contract will be on the same basis that we currently have, so it will not include some of the items or increases in service that we had recommended in the request for proposals. So, I don't know if you all have any questions of me about the process, but we just wanted to be very clear about moving forward and the expectation of what we would expect to see.
Questions?
Well, I would make a motion then. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to reject all proposals for the management of the Asheville Transit System received from the RFP process.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would also move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to extend the current contract with First Transit on a month-to-month basis as needed to revise the RFP process.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? This is sort of anticlimactic here. All right. Oh, okay, there we go.
Okay.
Please just state your name.
Diane Allen. I just have a question on the month-to-month basis. Why isn't there some sort of deadline? Because it seems like it's a, you know, a pit to go on and on and on and on. How come there cannot be some sort of deadline?
If I may, Diane, I'll speak to the council as well. Let me start out by saying that I accept responsibility for this process not being run the way it should be run.
Thank you.
And with the assistance of the city attorney's office, we're going to take a direct involvement in this and make sure this process is done right. We have to get it right with consultation from the Federal Transit Administration. We're going to be very clear about what the criteria will be. We're going to stick to that criteria. We're going to evaluate the proposals against that criteria. There would be a different management team running this out of my office, and so we will try to move through that as quickly as possible. You know it takes a minimum of four to six months. But we want to have the flexibility, if we can get this figured out with the Federal Transit Administration and get on a fast track, we will do so. But the first thing that we need to do is prioritize getting it right and to take away any opportunities for legal objections to the award when it comes back to council.
Okay. I understand it takes four to six months, and that is including on the preparation of the original RFP going out. Now that we have an original RFP that went out, would that same RFP go out? Would there be a whole new RFP to the management company?
Kathy might be able to speak to that detail based upon her consultation with the Federal Transit Administration.
If you have another question, I don't think I have to go on. Okay. So, no, it will not be the same RFP because of the guidance that we've got from the Federal Transit Administration. We will need to revise that RFP to be in compliance. We think that the majority of it is, but we think we will have to be very clear about how we will go about awarding it. So, there will be some changes to the RFP itself before we consider that.
Thank you, Kathy. And if I might add, the first thing that all stakeholders will see from us is communication, giving our understanding of how the process should be run based upon concurrence with the Federal Transit Administration. With that, we'll be able to describe how the process will be structured and will, should have an expectation of steps and timeline that go with that. We'll be sure to send that to all stakeholders, including those in employment, those on boards and commissions of the council, and the general public.
And then, so two, two things. Number one, I think in direct response to that, you'll put that out there and then obviously respond to questions, concerns, be...
We will have a project manager appointed and contacted prepared to answer any and all questions.
Yeah, okay. And then the second thing is on the revised RFP, my understanding is that we're revising that to allow for more flexibility in the factors that we consider. Is that, is that the case?
No. It is actually to clarify exactly the way that we will measure. So, it actually is, is going to require that in the RFP itself, we state specifically, this is what we're going to look at in order to make the award. That has to be included as part of the RFP.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? Yes.
Hi, council members. Thank you for your service and time. I'm Amy Cantrell with Just Economics, and I represent the People's Transportation Campaign. I just want to highlight that our 19-point agenda item on our 19-point, People's Agenda on Transit states that we want a management company that operates in the best interest of the riders, the drivers, and the city of Asheville. And I just want to take this opportunity because I know that we have the two companies in the room that bid on the first RFP, and I just want to say publicly that we expect a management company to operate in the best interest of the riders, the drivers, and the city of Asheville. And we will continue to create accountability so that we have that. And we want a management company that works with us as a city and works with folks that are using our public transportation. We need a good transit system that we all feel confident in, and so I just want to put that out there and to any other folks that might bid on future RFPs. And I want to ask, in the evaluation process, I know we had an expert from the city of Raleigh. We have experts that ride the buses every day and drive the buses every day. Would love to see some way that there could be input for authenticity when these proposals are put forward, that folks that really have the on-the-ground experience of riding and driving buses can, can at least shed some light on the information that is put in the RFP so that we feel like it's accurate from that perspective. And so, I hope that there might be some way to have input into the process. Thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else? All right.
Mr., can I, sorry, can I just say just one thing really quickly? So, I just want to say thanks to Amy and Sabra and the drivers for being here. You guys are, you know, you didn't plan to stay until, is it really 9 o'clock? 8 o'clock? 8:30? So, you know, appreciate all the energy and dedication you're putting into this. I think we agree with you, Amy. We all want a transit management company that respects and upholds and improves the lives of the people who live here and the drivers and the effectiveness of the system, and we'll keep working until we get there.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. We have two items left on our agenda here, and the Vice Mayor is going to handle both of them, so I'll try to...
Okay. So, we had two applicants for the WNC Regional Air Quality Agency Board, and we interviewed them this afternoon, and not, not all council members were able to attend those interviews, but what I'd like to do is get a vote, so just by voice vote. We have Joel Storo and, I'm losing it, I can't remember, Bob Lane and Robert Lane. So, we'll start with Keith.
Rob Lane.
Okay.
Bob Lane.
Storo.
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 Both excellent candidates, really extraordinary, but in the interest of bringing somebody who hasn't done this before into the process, Bob Lane.
Storo.
Okay. So, Storo has it four to three, and Maggie, and yeah, absolutely great candidates. You know, it's sort of surprising, something like the Air Quality Board that you had a competition. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of cool. Okay. So, for the, the next one, this is the Accessory Dwelling Unit Task Force, and basically, we had, we had identified four stakeholder groups that we contacted, the city contacted the stakeholder groups and asked for recommendations, a couple choices, and then we also went out to the public and asked for two representatives from four different categories: concerned neighbors who are impacted by ADUs, members of the community who own, manage, or benefit from such rentals, renters, and, fourth, neutral but interested individuals. We did send that back out a second time to re-advertise, and we, I mean, I really was impressed by the number of people that are interested in serving on this because this is going to be a really tough, tough thing. But what happened this morning is the government, Governance Committee met because the ADU Task Force was put on, on the Governance Committee's agenda, and we came up with the following. And so, we, yeah, we, we were unanimous in those recommendations. So, so all these people have three votes automatically. So, the Asheville Short Term Rental Advocates, Kamal Ward, the Asheville Neighborhood Advisory Committee, Greta Bush, the Land of the Sky Association of Realtors, Randall Barnett, and the Asheville Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Barbara Melton. And then for concerned neighbors who are impacted by the ADU short-term rentals, we had Jane Matthews and David Rogers. Members of the community who own, manage, or benefit from such rentals, we've got John Farquhar and Jackson Tierney. Renters, we've got Israel Hill and Kelly Prime. And neutral but interested individuals, we had Wendy Dean and Carter Webb. So...
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sure. Okay. Okay. We don't ask for public...
Thanks, Governance, for doing this. It was a really heavy lift. It was a lot of sifting through to make this happen as quickly as you did. Thank you.
Well, you are welcome.
Whatever we can do for you. So, yeah, it was, no, that's not true. Right. But it really was a great slate of candidates. This is going to be hard work, but, you know, the good news is it'll be over relatively quickly, hopefully. So, we have a motion and a second. May, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Back to me to finish it up.
Sorry.
The, I have one, this is the part where we get to the public comment, and I have one person signed up, Carrie Levin. I think Carrie Levin. Carrie Levin, I'm sorry, Carrie Levin. It was a long one. It was a long, it was about the bond issue.
Well, Carrie, you can email us.
Yes. Anybody else wishing to speak during the public comment period? No? Okay. Wow. All right. Do we have exciting announcements? Usually you guys have some, something. Yeah?
Just boards and commissions vacancies that are still out there.
Yes.
People to apply. There's African American Heritage Commission, Citizens Police Advisory Committee, Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, Neighborhood Advisory Committee, Sustainability Advisory Committee, Energy and the Environment, Tree Commission. Deadline is Wednesday, July the 20th.
And we've got the Development Comp Plan. The Comp Plan is also out there, and we're really, again, we're really looking for diversity in both kind of the traditional sense, but also locationally. You know, South Asheville...
People in South Asheville are calling you.
South Asheville, East Asheville. Come on.
Evidently, there's some business owners who would like to be more of a part of it. I look forward to it. I also wanted to mention, I went, I was at the Alcohol Beverage Control Board today, the ABC Board meeting where they passed their budget. Their revenues have increased significantly over the last year, and the distribution that will be coming to the city of Asheville's general fund is north of $1.5 million this year. So, hats off to that board and all the folks who work at ABC.
And everyone who drinks alcohol in Asheville, apparently. Did you have an announcement that you, you didn't have one? We, we have a very busy meeting scheduled this summer because we decided we needed more things to do, and so we'll be back there next week.